Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2024 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom and it will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Ross?
I am here and everyone is in attendance. Thank you, City Clerk Dean. Um, we now move to first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. And the agenda tonight is just the comprehensive plan environmental element for the roundtable. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
To move by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Christensen. Any discussion? See none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? So the motion passes unanimously and the agenda is approved. This evening's special business is comprehensive plan environmental element discussion, which will be led by Community Development Director Emily Artecha. And I believe that we are on, oh, we're starting from scratch on this one. So I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, let me just run through a, a brief, um, few slides. But first of all, can everyone hear me okay? I've had some concerns in the past. That the mic has not worked or I have not talked into the mic. Um, so we're going to go over the schedule and process, a brief summary of the policies and then enter into review and discussion. You've seen this chart before. Community engagement, planning commission meetings, council workshops, all feed into the development of the goals and policies. Behind the scenes, we've got the technical, technical analysis, the supporting documentation. We've got interactive agency review, providing us comments that's in real time. All of these things lead to the final output of a final comprehensive plan that can be adopted. I've circled here the word environment. You are not only on the downhill, you are at the bottom of the hill. This is the last one. Hip, hip, parade. See some smiles? You're gonna miss me after six months. I won't be here at your next Monday morning roundtable. You'll have a new face. You know someone different. It's okay, though.
Unless this one takes us a really long time.
Well, that's why we're moving quickly. I, you've seen this slide too. I gave you a preview. I also want to remind you that I gave you two very polite reminders to asterix or star, the policies that you want to engage in a little bit more discussion about. Here are some things that you should recognize from looking at the draft goals and policies. Best available science is always a big one when it comes to the environment. It dovetails nicely into work that will go on with the critical areas update. Use of FEMA guidelines, those are something else that we'll be up, updating to this year. Um, making sure our standards are, um, in line with FEMA. Noxious weed control, there are several others. Without further ado, let's go ahead and shift right into the goals and policies. I'm going to stop this screen share and share another screen. Just one moment. Okay, just like we've done before, I'll read the goal and then I'll just read the associated letter and we'll see how quickly we can move through this. The health, wildlife and ecosystem services and functions provided by the city's natural environment are protected and enhanced and potential hazards to citizens' health, welfare and property are minimized. A. B. C.
Slow it down just a little bit. Some of us are still on, there's a great disturbance in the resistance.
C. B. E. F.
Oh, yes, that one.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I believe that this was the one, uh, that the planning commission had a lot of discussion about with regard to, uh, what was originally, uh, drafted by staff to say, um, that, uh, the city would follow, uh, the principles of free prior and informed consent with regard to Native American tribes. Uh, this is, um, an international, um, program that, uh, countries all over the world are working on with, uh, regard to, uh, whoever the first peoples were of whatever land they're on. So, you know, that could be Pacific Islanders, it could be, um, people in the Middle East, wherever. Uh, and I think that, uh, this makes a lot of sense, uh, to, uh, to revisit in that, um, uh, I think that, uh, we have had plenty of issues before where if we didn't, uh, come to the tribe with regard to it, just information, uh, with regard to upcoming projects and things, then all of a sudden we get this backlash of, uh, well, wait a minute, whoa, whoa, everybody slow down. And, uh, that affects the public's perception of what's going on. It, it leads to a lot of confusion. Now, where the planning commission got tripped up and why they decided to remove that language was specifically over the part of it that says free prior and informed consent. And the concern from, uh, both the chair and a number of other members of the planning commission was, well, wait a minute, are we saying that they get to have veto power over anything that we do in the city? And, uh, as a result, I think that they may have thrown the baby out with the bathwater. I think that they throw out the rest of that part with the free prior and informed because of the issue of the last term, the consent part. Uh, and so I think that I'd like to revisit, uh, just re-adding those first three terms that, uh, we should establish and maintain relations, uh, through the principles of free, prior and informed. I know the consultation means something legally, uh, so I don't know if that's the exact right word to use as consultation, but fine with, and what I'd encourage us to do is to re-add those first three words, but just get rid of the term consent, because I don't think that we should as a city, uh, basically say, hey, we're going to go to them for a final approval of anything that we do. I don't think that we should do that, but at the same time, I do think that we should go to them, uh, when there's developments in the city of, uh, a particular size, say, um, you know, like, something like the Mill Side or, uh, even, um, the proposed model train museum, things that could be of some significance, uh, and just tell them, hey, just so you know, here's what's going on. And, uh, and I think that that would potentially, uh, mitigate some potential issues that we've run into the past where all of a sudden we get that backlash where they felt like they were left out of the conversation.
Councilwoman Cotton?
So basically something like using the word input or, um, um, versus, like you said, consent.
Right. So there may be a better term than consultation that, like I said, has this particular legal meaning, but I don't know if that's what we want to say. Um, but I wonder if, if perhaps staff could brainstorm if there's a better term that, that's appropriate. Free prior and informed, something.
Could you, could you rephrase the policy as you'd like it to read?
Okay, let's see. Uh, establish and maintain relations with Native American tribes. Perhaps something like, uh, by following the principles of free prior and informed blank, uh, for the preservation of archaeological sites and cultural properties. Blank is in something like consultation that doesn't carry necessarily the specific.
Collaboration.
Collaboration, maybe that's a good word. I'm happy with that.
So the, this is just a definition for, so principle of free prior informed consent refers to the right of indigenous people to give or withhold their consent for any action that would affect their lands, territories or rights. So this would be, we would use it more just for information than to make determination. And we'll take their input and then consider that.
Yeah.
We have Councilwoman Benson?
My concern is, um, needs to be very specific and ironclad wording. Um, Council, Councilwoman Christensen can probably speak to this really well, because however we mean it, doesn't really matter. What matters is how it will later be interpreted. And if, if the wording of something like that is not ironclad and clear, then collaboration will mean consent. Right, you know, uh, information will mean, no, we are to inform you and, uh, you know, any, anything can be, can be eventually twisted to the point of meaning consent. So if we do add phraseology like that into something like this, I, I would want to make sure that it is that it doesn't mean, that it cannot be pretzeld into consent later on.
You have an alternative?
Uh, no, I do not, but, but, but the ones that I've heard already are already scary to me. Collaboration and, uh, information even, uh, are a concern to me.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Are these types of items typically, if there's a question about wording or something, is this something that would be reviewed by council, city council?
Right, so we'll redline it and then bring it back for approval and so we can come up with some additional language. Cause, and I think to Councilwoman Benson's, Benson's point, if you're putting in three of the four items, because they call it FPIC, then someone down the road is going to say, oh, they meant consent.
Especially if we had a C.
So, so we put in other types of language that would mean similar, right, to that. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
All right, depending on how you decompose the sentence, I'm having issues with it. Are, are we only working for preservation of these sites if they are, uh, what do we call it, in danger, where are you going, vulnerable to climate change?
That's a good point, yeah, and I really would have to go back and look at the old language as it evolved to find out if this was exactly, number F was exactly the pop draft policy that had the free prior consent language in it. I know that we, we had an, uh, two, two competing policies. One was very much evolving around, uh, archaeological and traditional cultural. And those have their own process and are identified in, in the state of Washington. And there are a few properties that are considered to be traditional cultural properties that we consulted with the tribe on, um, and they're, they're already listed. So, um, this particular policy is with regard to agricultural and traditional, especially when it comes to climate change and making sure that those properties don't somehow get, you know, impacted by.
So I, I would, it suggested that, that, and there from the word that on be struck, because it's either, uh, redundant in that we're going to work with them on archaeological sites and all that anyway, whether it's environmental construction or whatever, or it's limiting that we're only going to work with them on things that are affected by climate change. And I don't think either one is correct. I think it's just, we're going to work with them on preservation of archaeological and traditional cultural sites.
Okay.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with that. Uh, we should talk then about all the things that are important, uh, that could affect, um, sites. Um, here's another, uh, shot at it. How about establish and maintain relations with Native American tribes through free and prior information for the preservation of archaeological sites, et cetera.
I don't give a free. They got it on recording.
There you go.
But I don't understand what free.
Free and prior information.
Right, but what's free mean?
That means that they don't have to pay for it.
Well, we're going to charge them.
It's.
I don't know if that's, is it?
That wasn't the way I interpreted that word.
Councilwoman Benson?
Yeah, I, I'm, I wonder. I, I, I guess I, I guess what I'd love to hear, I don't think I understand what's missing. If you read the sentence, Councilman Johnson, um, we're, uh, without the, uh, clause follow, with, uh, that and on, what is it that is missing from, from the sentence that, that you're concerned about?
Councilwoman Johnson?
I think that it would be very meaningful to the tribe to know that we are interested in those general principles. I think that that might be a nice olive branch.
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is what is it? In, in the sentence as it's written, what is missing?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Uh, those words have specific meaning, um, I think. It's.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Um, so again, going through and then adding parts of a, a commonly used phrase that's meant not with a legal meaning or perhaps in that way, but only using some of it, I do think could cause confusion. I think that if we're going to rework it to include some of the information that you're wanting to see, whether it's, and I, I don't really want to put the city on the hook for establishing a duty to notify necessarily in that way. At least I'd be hesitant about it. But I, I don't want to borrow part of that if it's going to make the statement unclear. And again, I think if folks down the road take a look at this, they will think that we've meant the entire, I guess, not loaded phrase, but essentially by only including the part. So I think that by adding it, I, I don't know that I would use those specific words because I do think that it, it might make it a bit more confusing. Going back to Ethan's point, I, I don't, but if we remove from that on, that may be sufficient enough or with a little bit of tweaking, I think we might be able to get there. But again, I would be hesitant to use a loaded phrase that, that stands for something that is internationally recognized, because I think it'll get, they'll come back and bite us.
Director Artecha?
I, I would just like to point out that the, those specific words are not coming from the state of Washington, but in turn, the state of Washington, Washington did create new law that we practiced this year, it went into effect, which required the city, all cities, to engage in advanced consultation, and I'm not using technical legal words, in advanced consultation with the local tribe for the benefit of the process at hand. And so we, we are very advanced in this state to come up with language that would require us and mandate that kind of relationship. So just wanted to point that out and happy to share that information with you if you are interested in reading more about that law.
So, Councilwoman Benson, and then can, did you?
Uh, yeah, I, I, well, I, I think Councilwoman Christensen put it best. Yeah, it kind of feels like the nose of the camel under the tent if we use part of the phrase. And, um, I, I think that, I think the sentence says all, all the stuff, you know, that the substance of it. Um, and I guess I'm just worried about the same thing that Kara explained so well.
Councilwoman Christensen?
Um, I think that my, my personal request, thank you, um, would be to get the additional language from the state of Washington so we can review and advance the finalizing the language here. And then also, I know that the tribe has reviewed this and I know that it's gone through several iterations. I don't know what the tribe's requested language was, but I'd like to take a look at that if that's available as well. That way we can honor, to the extent that, that we can get this all to fit in and meet together in a, in a way that's codizable, but, but we at least have those two to review as well as what was recommended by planning commission and that might be the easiest path forward.
Yeah, we did share with the planning commission where that language came from and as best as I could determine, it came from the United Nations.
Yeah, but it's, it's my understanding that the tribe reviewed the actual, um, elements and the, and the goals at some point. And I was hoping to get whatever their, their feedback was on that. Does that make sense?
Sure, yeah, the policies have shifted and changed from when they reviewed them, but yeah, happy to, to share that. Well, thank you.
Okay, so we have a little more research to do than on letter F.
Yeah.
G. H. I. J. K. L. M. Okay, I'm going to read number two. Too fast?
Yeah, I'm still working on M.
Two, rivers, streams, aquifer recharge areas and other water resources within the city are protected and managed for multiple beneficial uses. A. B.
Chair?
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
Well, I guess my question is, why is it, uh, management and restoration with this called watershed, yet it is implement the Puget Sound Action Agenda?
Well, um, they're slightly different organizations, though the watershed is all about managing and restoring. Um, and the Puget Sound Action Agenda is, is something that's been carried forward from two, 2015. And they have a whole series of, um, action oriented, um, prioritizations in their plan. Um, slightly different. And that they're involved in implementation of these action items. Whereas the watershed is just ongoing kind of maintenance.
Okay.
C. D.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Oh. The retrofitting of the basins, um, is that something you can briefly describe? Or is this something that, um, Public Works would, um, be able to, uh, tell us more about that?
Which one are you on?
D.
D.
Support retrofitting basins to improve stormwater management and quality.
Would be a Public Works, yeah, if you wanted more information about exactly how they do that.
Okay.
E. F. G. H. I. J. K. L. M. N. O. N P. Okay, I'm going to read number three. This is the last one of this element. Well, number three. Public health and property damage risk associated with flood and geological hazard areas have been reduced while preventing imperable harm to regionally significant ecological resources. A. B. C. D. E. Okay, last one, F.
Any other comments regarding this section? That's a lot. Community Development, Arteria?
I was just going to mention that if we do have few extra minutes, perhaps we could divert back to the economic development element and see if there were any comments there. And we could move that along a little bit swifter.
We can do that. And then during, because it's also in the agenda, so I will also mention that if you want to re, hear the audio or video, they can actually come back and, and watch it for any further comments, so. Councilor Johnson?
I just want to mention that the, uh, staff and the Planning Commission did an excellent job reviewing all these items here. As you heard, we just went right through them and it's like, oh, do we care about water? Yes, water's good. So I'm just very pleased with the work that was done on this element.
Thank you.
I agree. Our Community Development, Planning Commission, Council, we had, there's lots of open houses. There's been a lot of input on this, so. Everyone's worked really hard on it and nice job on that. So this item element will be on our May 28th Council Agenda then to finally approve, review and approve. And we're going to switch over to the economic element portion. I think we left off like at 4B.
Okay, 4B.
Where can I find this one? Is this one in our notes or is this a?
It's on the Council Agenda.
It's in the packet.
Yeah. Do we know around what page?
Hundred fifty-one.
One fifty. Thank you. We have 4B.
I will add a word. So on 4A, I made a note last time that we were going to add the word historic in front of Meadowbrook so that we know something like historic downtown Meadowbrook or something like that. So there's a clarification that it's not the farm, that it's actually an area of Snoqualmie.
Looks like we need a space in there, huh?
Okay. C.
Councilor Vincent, did you come in?
Yeah, I, I was looking at A, but there is a, you know, just a, need a space between historic and buildings, it looks like.
Thank you. D.
Councilor Cotton?
On D, what's, I understand the culturally and ethnically diverse businesses. What are the institutions you were referring to? Because when I think institutions, I think of schools and hospitals and, you know, tho- those types of things. So is there other types of institutions you're referring to?
Public institution.
Echo Glen.
E.
Councilor Watten and then Councilor Johnson.
I assume wherever Riverwalk appears will be River Trail instead.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to say.
F.
Councilor Vincent?
On, on E, is there a reason we italicize from?
No.
Well, I mean, we could throw Comic Sans in here and there too, but we should have a reason.
How will the?
Councilor Cotton?
How will the, the River Trail protect the downtown riverfront properties from flooding? Is it the way that?
We, we will buy them.
Oh, that part of the, okay.
Okay. F.
Councilor Vincent?
I'm not trying to be facetious. Is there a reason for the different fonts that we're seeing?
No. So please, please ignore the different fonts.
Okay.
This is just exactly the way that it was transmitted and signed by the Planning Commission.
Will that be clean? Is the plan to clean that up and?
Yeah, this is just for your packet informational purposes, yeah. It is going through a complete graphical presentation design, assembly.
That is the answer I expected. Thank you.
Right, on H, is that right, H?
I think we're on G.
Oh, G, G. H. I.
Councilor Johnson?
I wonder on that one, if we could just add at the end, unique sense of place and history?
Oh my gosh. I was thinking the exact same thing.
Yeah.
We will add it. Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, I, I was thinking the exact same words and I was thinking specifically about, for example, the totem pole and the discussion about what to do about that and how to honor our history and, and the culture of the area. And I think, I think that would be a fantastic addition to that one, to, to that. What letter are we on? I, there you go. Councilor Johnson, reading my mind.
J.
Councilor Cotton?
On J, do we, do we want to just name one event, the Plain Air Paintout, or leave it open to more? I mean, I realize it's such as, but, but other things or other event, hosting events but presented by the Arts Commission, because there's many events going on that promote public art. So I'm wondering if that's something to more, in case that word ever go away, but you know, put it as the events that, there are many events, including art being put here in City Council, City Hall.
We could always amend the comp plan annually.
Okay.
You know, if it died.
And there's also art off, off thrills and things like that, so maybe. Maybe.
Chuck the block and, you know, all kinds of fun things. So as far as the murals and so there's many, many, many things, events that the Arts Commission provides.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, so I guess the question would be, do we want a list or to get rid of the such as?
No, I don't.
Or are we happy to just have one example? Another one would be Railroad Days. So I, I think it is awkward to just have one, but.
Yeah. More than one, but less than all.
Right.
Or just by mentioning the Arts Commission. I mean, the, because they're the ones that do all these events. I, I, I'm fine with the one. I just thought it was weird that way.
Well, isn't plain art, the plain air?
Paintout.
Paintout. I mean, it's uniquely different, you know, attracting art, artists that paint specific images of Snoqualmie and then one is selected.
In the open air, yeah, I.
Air, we went even so far as to collect all of the, the past art that's been selected and we're going to try to infuse that throughout the entire comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Okay.
Opportunities to differentiate between elements and showcase the unique.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine. It was like, we should either list a bunch or maybe not list any, but if everyone's fine with that, I'm also fine with that. It's a good event.
It is, but I'm wondering if we just, like you suggested, remove such as, and then just add by art commissions. We promote public art by hosting events by the Arts Commission, because it's tied to the city. And that can take into account everything, because we don't want to have to update the comp plan every time something and it changes like that. Councilor Benson and Councilor Johnson?
I think, I think it, there is value in, in having some sort of list of events that it makes it clear that this is not an aspirational goal. It's something that we're doing throughout the year. I don't think there's anything, I don't, I don't think it damages anything to have the list. And I think if you put the, the such as in, then it doesn't have to be updated every time we add or subtract an event, because even if Plain Air was, ended as an event in the future, we would still want to have events such as Plain Air.
Councilor Johnson?
I'm thinking about that. Also, the Art Commission, I don't think is the only organization that hosts or plans events that include art things, like Railroad Days has art opportunities that I don't think are organized by the Arts Commission, so.
They're not Snoqualmie Days.
So I would think we could say by the Arts Commission and other organizations or something like that. But I, I do like to call out to the Arts Commission. But I just think we should say, and others.
At all.
At all, yeah.
Okay, so we're maybe expanding the list and then putting, mentioning Arts Commission and other organizations.
And then after we do that, we can reduce the list.
That's something.
Just so you know, we will never be satisfied.
What other examples are we including? Arts Commission?
Get out of this.
Chuck.
Yeah.
Chuck the block.
Well, art off the rails. Art off the rails is one in conjunction with the Northwest Railway Museum and North Bend's Art and Industry. We, there's also the, the historic murals that are, yeah, maybe in City Hall. But also the window murals that are done, the pole banners, the, you know, there's a wide variety of things that, that are ongoing.
We have, the next one is murals.
Yeah.
We have murals already included, so do we want to include art off the rails as another example?
We just come up with a list of five or so, some of the ones she just mentioned.
So even the one from North Bend?
Well, we're doing it in conjunction with North Bend.
Okay.
Councilor Johnson?
Yeah, I was going to say by the Arts Commission and others such as, and then the list. And one of the other things to maybe include in the list is Railroad Days.
Or Snoqualmie Days.
It's called Snoqualmie Days now, sorry.
Snoqualmie Days, yeah.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Riverwalk Days.
And L. All right, that concludes your work on the goals and policies for the city's comprehensive plan until we meet again with a resolution to adopt comprehensive plan.
Excellent. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Watten, second by Councilor Washington. All those favorites say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed name? You're adjourned at six forty-nine. Councils brings us to our regular meeting of City Council. The time is now seven PM. We just completed a roundtable and let's break it show that all council was present. Council, please stand and join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Protim Holloway, would you please lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now move to the first item, regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agendas.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councillor Washington. So, Councillor, do you have any questions, discussion, Mayor Protim Holloway?
Can we move proclamations to occur? Agenda, we have a lot of people in the House for proclamations, they may not want to sit through the rest of it.
Let's make them.
Is there a second?
We have a second, yeah.
Second.
Just moved by Mayor Protim Holloway, second by Councillor Washington, to move the proclamations following the approval agenda. Any other changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Any pos nay? Okay, so that was approval of the motion and the overall agenda, including the change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pos nay? All right, the agenda is approved as amended. So our first item is proclamation of Affordable Housing Week. So, whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas US Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as as housing on which occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net housing units for households at below, or below 80% area median income. And whereas, studies have found that each $1 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas, and a 39% increase in homelessness in suburbs and rural areas. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas United to Raise Public Awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. And I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the City of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim that this week, May 13th to 17th, is Affordable Housing Week. And you can read the full proclamation online, so. Next one is National Police Week. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of Snoqualmie. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023, and 164 officers killed in previous years. And service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Funds 36 Kinalite Vigil on the evening of May 13th. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the US flag should be flown at half staff. Therefore, I, Catherine Ross, Mayor of the State of Snoqualmie, do hereby proclaim May 13th to the 18th, National Police Week in the City of Snoqualmie, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And we see that we have many of our dedicated police officers that are with us tonight, so we thank you. Right. Now moving on to introduction of the mayor's proposed 2025 to 2030 CIP. CRP Manager Dylan Gamble is here tonight to provide an overview of the capital improvement plan.
Good evening, Councillor, Mayor, my name is Dylan Gamble. I'm the CIP manager, and I would like to give you the introduction to the proposed CIP between 2025 and 2030. I'll go ahead and share my screen real quick and kind of outline major components. And I'm sure you can all see that perfectly well, just like I can. Sorry about that. So first and foremost, this is an update to a existing document that we already have. So we have a CIP we've been working on, it was the 23 to 28 document. The current edition has utilities and the nonutilities combined. But right now, for this effort, we're just looking at the nonutility side of that program. We'll look at the utilities aspect later this summer with a utility rate study that will compare to that. That'll help us find the revenue and expenditures combined. So for this focus, we are just looking at transportation, open space, and facilities type projects that are in the nonutility half of the CIP. So just to get off the bat, there's some projects that you probably have close to your heart that are, you're expecting to see in this kind of a document, but they'll end up actually in the utility side of things, either in stormwater, sometimes transportation projects from the outside world will actually be a utility project to replace a main, but the benefit to us can be that a new road or a sidewalk shows up. So we'll make sure that we can clarify that as we go. And looking at the documents themselves, so what I would have provided to you before is a large document. It's an 11 by 17, yes, and I'll make name that big one, but that is essentially the combination of all of our revenue sources categorized by the restricted use funds. So in this case, we'll see blue, that's tying to transportation restricted funds. And I'll try to showcase which projects those restricted use funds are going towards. So transportation project to transportation projects. Same thing's true for parks and open space type projects, and those are in the green. And then we have IT projects in gray, as well as facility projects in like orange color. That's the general breakdown of this, the top half is that revenue section, bottom half is the expenditures. And it's color coded, and the legend is on the right. Next document, I'd like to bring your attention to. This document here, I affectionately call the worksheets or the one pagers, but they're essentially the deep dive on each program and project within that nonutility CIP. So we have a list of 20 projects that are in there, in this side of the CIP. And this is kind of that deep dive, it looks at both the revenue and expenditures, and it kind of shows where all the revenues are coming from, the bottom end here. And it shows where the expenditures and our anticipated balance of how those expenditures will break out, so to speak. So you'll see that in the different categories on then above. And then we have a description of the project, community impacts and operating impacts, as well as a photo to help tie the whole project together in your mind. At the very bottom of this is an addition for this, this, and that's just to include some of the completed projects that we did this year or last year. And so the most recent biennium year is 2324. That's just to kind of help solidify the progress that we're making in these activities. And then the last document I want to get to is the changes document. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a existing CIP, it's excellent. It had a lot of work that went into it, it has a lot of wonderful project. And this to try to showcase how we are moving those over time. So what this document here will indicate is what is changing between the two documents. I tried to make it as clear as possible, there's always going to be a bit of complexity with a really complicated project or program that has some changes. But overall, what we were trying to do when we pivoted from the previous document to this one is awareness of our revenues, awareness of our expenditures. And then we looked at council priorities and goals, we tried to make sure that our levels of service were being maintained to achieve those goals that were set out by council and that staff reviews periodically. And that includes some of the addition of new projects, their priority within this, and the timing that they take place. All those factors can change, and we did that to try to make sure that we had a balanced budget that achieves those goals with all those objectives. And so this is just that cheat sheet to try to help you all understand how we got from there to here. And I guess I'll leave it right there for my introduction, but I'm always available by email if you have any quick questions. But I can leave it there, take questions however we like to afford. And I do have one thought on next steps, because I know we're getting to the point where you've all seen this document or are going to begin to have questions for me. If you have thoughts or edits that are in the wording of a document, we can kind of work through that as we go, and to some extent, we have some flexibility. But my request going forward, and especially in future council meetings, is to help me not get lost in recommendations. So we talked about this earlier, but if we're going to change any of the financial pictures, this is kind of speaking out of turn, but I'd like to be very clear that I'm put onto the Dylan, make this change, and not a recommendation or a thought in the room. Same thing's true if we want to radically change the description of the timing, anything like that. I just need to make sure that I'm tracking with your comments and if they are direction, rather than just thoughts.
So in addition to that, if you don't mind, Councillor, for a moment, is we do have additional sessions coming up. So this is not obviously your one and only time. With this material, there's going to be multiple touchpoints, basically through here, we've got adoption date scheduled for June the 24th. In between now and then, what you're going to look at is you're going to have a tour of some CIP locations around the city. As well as there are going to be a public open that we're going to be offering to the public as well on June the 6th to come and actually have a discussion with staff and council regarding the CIP and what we're proposing. In addition to that, there's a number of meetings at both the Parks and Federal Works Committee, as well as the FNA Committee addressing the CIP, so this will be certainly a huge topic on your agenda moving forward from here until really the end of June. So that's hopefully some information that's valuable to you, we're not asking for a decision today. Eventually, we're going to be gathering your questions and your feedback, and trying to address them in a systematic process.
Mayor Protim Holloway.
Can we look at the slide for the community center?
The one that was sent out before, the one you have written.
Well, either one, I mean, the one that was prior into, or the one you handed out tonight. And I'm in the funding section called line of credit. Was that in prior versions of this, or is this a new assumption in funding?
It was in this one.
But no, I mean, was this in the, not the 2024 version of this, but the 2023 version of this? Was that line of credit assumption in there for funding?
No, it wasn't.
Okay, is that line of credit assumption planning in any other project other than the community center?
No. However.
However.
Let's go there, so however, the line of credit rolls into a bond. A bond that is roughly equivalent to $8.3 million, if I'm correct, Dylan. So roughly the $5.2 million will roll into that bond. In addition, there are three other capital projects that will make up the remaining portion of the bond. That includes the River Trail Arboretum Project, Town Center Phase 3, as well as the Meadowbrook Bridge Restoration Project, if I'm correct with the name itself. And so consequently, the reason why we have a line of credit in here is it really buys us some time. For the most part, what that allows us to do is to borrow only what we need. I'd hate to move forward with a bond pretty immediately if we were to move forward with this project and kind of, you know, have that money, we can get that money fairly quickly, right, in the door for the most part. But we want to look to see if there are other opportunities, other funding opportunities that may come along. We have had conversations about a King County Products Levy Grant, in addition to the $1 million that we've received. We know that the date in which we might receive additional funds from that would be roughly around September of 2025. And Dylan, you can certainly step in and correct me if I'm wrong, regards to that. So what that line of credit does, before we have to roll it into a bond, would buy us some time. And the line of credit right now for everyone's benefit in the room is listed at $5.2 million right now. So it's a financial tool for us to figure out where we're at, when we do need to roll that into a bond. Obviously, we're hoping to reduce that number over time through additional effort from here until really when the project finishes.
Councillor Benson.
I'm trying to wrap my head around that. Can you explain to me how that's different from a bond? From the citizens' perspective?
Well, so it's not much different. It in essence gives you more time.
It also kind of does with the pesky voting thing that's usually involved in a bond, though, it doesn't it?
Well, so we would have to bring an agenda bill back to council regarding the line of credit, right, overall. If we were to issue, say, a $10 million line of credit, or in this case, $5.2 million, we may not need to borrow that entire amount based on things that may happen over the next couple of years. If we start immediately going out for a bond, you know, in early 25, for example, then you're tied to that $5.2 million, and which are going to be paying back principal and interest over time. Throughout this process, through over the next two years, we will learn more about how much actually we need for a bond overall. There are going to be situations that will come up. For example, the King County Quatics Grant Levy, for example, maybe other funding opportunities that we haven't fully considered or have received or quite yet. In addition, there may be additional funds within the city that we can then vote to this, depending on how other projects perform as well. So what it does, it helps us to kind of buy some of that time, and what you're seeing right here is very much a worst case scenario. So we have built a bond into this project, knowing that everything else so far, and the other money, we've got it covered at this point. So that's what you're looking at when you see this community center. And in addition to that, just one more comment, this is council manic, it's not voted, it's not an excess levy, we're not proposing an excess levy to the public eventually. That is not what we're doing. This is basically, doesn't require a tax increase.
Mayor Protim Holloway, and then Councillor Benson.
Two questions, one, what are the other two projects that would be in the bond? And I guess the other statement is, it, council manic bond, that just means we are committing future revenue, which I'm not sure we have, we've all said that we're a little concerned about the budget right now. So we would, this will cut future revenue to the payoff of this council manic bond. Or line of credit. From existing resources, assuming no other changes. So I'll go back to my first question, though, what are the other two projects?
Yeah, there are two projects, Town Center Phase 3, as well as the Meadowbrook Bridge Restoration Project.
Yep. And Riverwalk Arboretum.
And the Riverwalk or River Trail Arboretum.
Yeah.
So it's three projects?
There are three projects.
Four total, which community center.
Right. Councillor Benson.
So then this would be a line of credit that eventually would be paid for through a council manic bond.
Correct.
A council manic bond to pay for, among other things, the community center expansion that has already been voted, you know, had a bond put forth for it three times and been voted down. I'm concerned about this, and I'm grateful that Councillor Holloway brought it up, because I would have missed it, I'm oblivious to many things. But I'm concerned that it feels like a way for us to get kind of roped into debt and then have to bond that out later, because there's no other option. And that concerns me because because the citizens of Snoqualmie have already voted against a bond for the community center three times.
I think the last time was
Closer.
2010.
Okay.
Here's your, Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate the discussion, and that we're concerned about this, I certainly am, for all the reasons that have been brought up. However, this is, in my estimation, a high level overview, and arguing over this at the moment might be a little bit far into the weeds, which is, well, I'm very glad that it was pointed out, because I hadn't exactly noticed that exact line for what it was called. I also wasn't too worried about it, because in my mind, I'm thinking about, well, I know that in the bank right now, we can't afford in my mind, I'm thinking about, well, I know that in the bank right now, we can't afford it. So there is some sort of explanation and when we get there, I'm sure that we'll get it. So to me, I was just thinking a little bit higher level at this point and that I know that we have the Parks Public Works committee that is going to be looking at this particular one in more detail. Is this going to come back to us in more detail? We can go through with a fine tooth comb at that point. So that was all all I wanted to say was just, I'm thinking a little bit higher level at the moment.
So just a few additional comments for everyone's benefit. We wouldn't be presenting a picture to you that included a bond if we didn't think it was financially viable for the city overall. So what I mean by that is if you were to look at this plan, we are preserving our assets. We have the street resurfacing program in there. We have the sidewalk replacement program. We're maintaining and taking care of those assets first before we ever venture into funding the community center. So that's really a critical element to the plan that you see here. In addition to that, we've actually expanded the list. We've got additional complete streets program overall, as well as environmental preservation programs. So I think we've done our due diligence as a city to make sure that we're taking care of our current assets where we need to at the levels of service standard that council has basically adopted. In addition to that, what you'll find over time is that we are protecting the city's financial condition and health. And why is that possible? Well, if you were to take a look at a reoccurring revenue inside of this bucket, in this bucket, we've called governmental capital in the past, and that's what you're looking at right here. Our reoccurring revenue exceeds how much we're spending on capital programs as well as debt service over time. So for every one dollar plus cents that we generate in recurring revenue is greater than the amount of money that we're spinning on reoccurring expenditures through this plan. And so as a consequence, we do think that it's a financially sustainable plan overall right now. Now, certainly it is a bit tight and these two right here have been working very hard to try to figure out ways to make sure that we're not overextending ourselves and things like that over time. And I commend them for their effort to date to do this. In addition to that, we have a conversation about a fiscal policy where we've tackled our reserve levels and you, we're making sure that we're setting aside 1.5 times our total annual debt service. Basically, within our fund balance to make sure that we have funds on hand to pay for that debt service over time. And not only that, but 1.5 times. And so that's why that financial policy discussion is really critical. In addition to that, as a part of this plan, what you're seeing is you're also going to see that Dylan and Jana both here both made sure that inflation was accounted for properly since after the pandemic happened and since the last update for this plan moving forward. So we think we've done our due diligence to provide counsel with a viable plan moving forward overall than does include the community center. Certainly does include debt. We certainly have a presentation coming up on the 28th regarding bonds as well, where we can kind of venture more into this conversation regarding it, which is what we hope to do. We understand that that is a bit of a shock. What I will say is this city does not take out much debt at all. In fact, our capacity is roughly $30 million and we're at a principal amount of $2 million. So consequently, it is relatively low in terms of what we can do legally overall at the city. And so for those reasons, I would probably submit them to council. In addition to that, we'll get into some of the reasons why council may want to take out debt. There are certain subjects that will come up that you'll hear about from our financial advisor. Planning, making sure that we're protecting our purchasing power. You know, the amount of interest that we generate, for example, is not enough to cover the escalation and cost, construction costs over time. And so if you were to say, set this money aside in a bucket and try to wait to come up with it, we may actually be losing our purchasing power over time. In addition to that, making sure that there's equity between the people that we have here now versus the people that may be joining the city in the future. And that's an important component of debt financing as well. And lastly, just one more point is this city has been built by bonds over time. Not just the recreational facility long time ago, but your police station, your fire station. This building itself was built by bonds. We've got additional infrastructure out there that was built by bonds. And so we do believe that you know, financing overall and bonds are a neutral way in order to fund our projects over time. There may be various reasons and indeed we would pay interest. Part of the reason why you're seeing a line of credit is hopefully to reduce that interest over time. We haven't described for you what the Fed funds rate and that expectation is to actually decrease over time, which would improve. If you were to take out a bond pretty quickly right now, you'd be paying a higher interest rate than you likely would over the next year or two years for the most part. So this is very much about cash flow or yeah, cash flow timing overall. And that's the picture that we're trying to present to you and will hopefully over the next couple of weeks and so on. And in regards to the CIP. So thank you for your time.
Your pro Tim Holloway.
Let me just state an expectation. When you present to council, call it rubber duck plan from 2023 to 2024, there's an expectation that you will tell us the major shifts in that plan as we start our initial discussions. I think moving from 5.2 million dollars from a funding hole to a loan is a major shift. We may talk about whether you consider a major shift, a million dollars, four million dollars, but I think five million dollars makes makes the break. Okay, so there is an expectation that these things come to come to light and aren't dug out. Okay, that didn't happen tonight. Like I said, we could have missed it. And we'll have the discussions you just allied, we will have those coming in further discussions coming up.
So you mentioned 2324. So this is actually in 25. So this we're talking about future 2526. Were you thinking it was this year?
Ma'am, you are presenting a plan tonight which calls out for the first time a 5.2 million dollar line of credit.
Correct. Twenty five.
I expect that when you do the presentation of that, that you highlight the significant changes from prior plans. I consider a 5.2 million dollar money shift a significant change from prior plan. I would appreciate those heads up versus me having to ask or find out about. That's all I'm saying at this stage. I I disagree with mostly the other statements, but we will have those conversations coming up.
I would say this is part of our presentation, though, is to is to point it out. So I guess you beat us to the to pointing it out. So this is all part of it.
The video may show that the presentation was concluded before the question was asked.
So the next time. See. That's the next.
So we are scheduled to review the CIP next at the May 21st FNA Committee as well as the May 21st Parks and Public Works Committee.
Is there any other topics, projects that you have questions on, or if you want to send questions in advance, we could be prepared to discuss those during those different meetings? Pastor Johnson.
Yeah, I noticed that there is a project missing and thankfully on the changes page, it is highlighted why. And that is the Community Sprayground project that that is longer in the CIP for next time.
Correct.
For a good reason.
It would be complete. That's right. Right. Any other comments before we move on? Next thing is item is, thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Jana. Thank you, Drew. This time we'll provide time for residents to comment on items not on the agenda. Few first ground rules, we have residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in efficient orderly manner. So comments will be limited to three minutes. Please wait to recognize and state your name and city of residence. Direct your comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note, this is not a time to ask questions to the council, mayor or staff, or to engage in debate. The council will quietly and respectfully listen to your concerns. Public comments during this portion of the meeting shall be limited to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, and plans and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in comments being suspended. And last, please respect the decorum as these proceedings is all due respect will be afforded to you. And we're only accepting public comment that are within these council chambers. Those online have opportunity to submit their comments through email. So with that, we're just, is there anyone like to address something that is not on the agenda this evening? So please raise your hand. Okay, it's City Clerk Dean.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I would like to introduce our new deputy city clerk Gretchen Garrett. Gretchen started with the city on May 1st and we're very happy to have her with us. Gretchen, do you want to come forward to the podium? And you're welcome to just say a few words, introduce yourself.
Does this make you the sheriff city clerk?
I'm Gretchen Garrett. Happy to be here.
And we're happy you are too. So it's great experience coming from, I don't know if we can say. I know, I don't know if we can say it out loud, but we're happy to have you. Next item is, thank you. Consent agenda contains approval of the city council meeting minutes dated 22nd, 2024. Approval of the claims, approval of the report dated May 13th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, same make customer Christiansen. Is there any public comment regarding any items, these two items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any discussion? Seen none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? And motion passes unanimously and the consent agenda is approved. Next item is ordinance AB 24 dash zero one five, the misuse of the 911 response system. This is the second reading of ordinance 1290. Counselor Martin, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Thank you, Mayor. This proposed ordinance is intended to reduce the number of false requests for emergency services or misuse of the 911 emergency response system, which occurs within the city of Snoqualmie, threatening public and officer safety and resulting in the waste of city resources. This ordinance would hold violators criminally responsible for the action. I move to adopt ordinance 1290 misuse of the 911 response system and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Been moved by Counselor Martin, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway to adopt misuse of the 911 response system. First, we'll go to public comment regarding item and there's it's a limit of two minutes. And it's based on the ground rules that we established earlier. So that would anyone wish to have public comment? Thank you. Please state your name and city.
My name is Susan Burke. I live in Snoqualmie, Washington. And thank you, Council and Mayor, the opportunity to speak on this. It's something very near and dear to me. I attended the online city council meeting for the first reading of pros new ordinance that would curtail abuse of the 911 system and became very concerned when I heard that one individual is having such a large negative impact on our system. While I work in the tech industry now, I previously worked 10 years in emergency services as a 911 dispatcher. As a dispatcher, your number one priority is the personnel you count on, who count on you, I'm sorry, to be their lifeline. When a police officer's line is threatened, they don't call 911, call 911, they call out to their dispatcher. The second priority is the public who are in imminent crisis. Dispatchers not only have to obtain and relay information to responding officers, they have to provide direction and sometimes comfort to those that may be experiencing one of the worst days of their life. Finally, a dispatcher has to deal with all of the other non-emergency calls and actions that need to be taken. We had a saying, no one ever calls us because they're having a great day and no one ever calls us because they did something right. Dispatchers deal with alongside police officers, the worst of what happens in our communities. In my years as a dispatcher, I had suicidal people I was trying to convince not to harm themselves, commit a final act while I was on the phone. I've been on the phone with people under extreme threat who were murdered as I spoke to them. I've been dispatching when a police officer was shot in the line of duty. Dispatchers are master multitaskers, but they are human. We need to ensure that they do not have to deal with, in addition to their important work, repeated abusive phone calls, especially from one person. I strongly urge you to pass this ordinance and allow officers to take action immediately before this one person who will not otherwise stop endangers someone's life. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak to this item?
Mayor and Council, my name is Teresa Davenport. I am a ISQ communication center dispatcher. I've been dispatching for 21 years now and I can tell you in less than five years, the people who have had such a profound impact on me and one of those people is this prolific caller. This caller is taking away all of our resources on a day-to-day basis. We recently had a stolen vehicle, was stolen place on it, occupants inside, our officers were out with it. Unfortunately, our dispatcher and our call takers were repeatedly having to answer business line calls from the same caller over and over and over again, which took away the safety of our officers and the citizens calling in. Couple months ago, I six hour period where I processed 43 calls for service for the same individual. I was berated, I was belittled, I was called names. I went home and after 21 years, I was like defeated and that doesn't happen very often for me. I've been doing this job a long time. I can handle just about anything. When you don't have any recourse because this individual is calling the business lines, it's really hard because you're consistently trying to give the best level of customer service we can give to our citizens and our officers. And it takes away everything that we're doing. We have no one lines, business lines, alarm lines, a jail board to run, a radio to run for all three cities. And we really parade ourselves in doing the best that we can and this individual is affected. Basis. So we're asking you guys to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this agenda item? Thank you. Would you have our chief Lynch? He could provide an overview of if you have any questions regarding this.
Good evening, Council. We are again for the second reading now. I've spoken to several of you over the last couple of weeks independently who had questions. I've tried to answer those questions the best as possible. I'm here for you tonight if those questions need to be asked in a public setting. I will do my best to answer them. I've also got a little bit additional news to give you. LT has been working on breaking down further the actual cost to the to the cities of North Bend and Snoqualmie as far as the dispatch services go. So I would have some further stats to break down for you if you were interested in hearing that. And also I found it with a couple of you very convincing when I played one of the calls, just to give a kind of a example of what 43 consecutive calls would listen would sound like to these dispatchers. So there it's public record. We can play it in here if you would like. It's ready to be keyed up. So you just let me know what you need tonight and then I'm here for you.
Counselor Martin.
I think that would be helpful so that anybody listening tonight that isn't here, people that are here have the opportunity to hear those.
Okay.
A sample.
Snoqualmie, North Bend, please. Hi, this is last.
Chief, chief, hang on a second.
Your pro Tim Holloway.
Okay.
It it does not state anyone's name other than picking on their chief and dispatch.
I don't, I I think I've heard enough. I don't know necessarily that I want to give a form for that the discussion, even if it is against the chief. I I concede the point that these calls were made and they were inappropriate and they're vulgar and whatever. Point taken. I no for no longer want to give them form for air, nor do I want to nor do I want to give the impression that at least in my deliberations, this is an individual issue. I don't make laws for individuals. I make laws that go on. I make laws that go on for twenty years. Do I think this law is appropriate for that twenty year period? Yes. Take that individual out of the picture. I think it's appropriate. I also think it's particularly appropriate for the individual, but that's a side benefit. My view needs to be long range, not just the next thirty, ninety days on these kinds of things. I think what you're asking is appropriate. I think you've done appropriate justification. I no longer want to give form to an individuals. Nor do I want to highlight this individual who have, may have other issues that ought to be handled, not in a public forum like this, but in, in some professional manner. Okay. But you guys can outvote me, but I, I, it's not appropriate in my mind.
Counselor Cotton?
I agree. I don't think we need to listen to this. We're very well aware of what this is. And I also want to say to the two dispatchers that testified that, well, number one, we appreciate your service and anything that's going to contribute to increasing stress levels in your job, which obviously this is. You know, we, we need to eradicate that by any way that we can. Your job is hard enough as it is. And believe me, as in forty five years on the other side of that radio communication, I, you folks are in the hot seat. And so we want to protect you as much as we, we really can. And so, yeah, I don't need to hear it. I don't think they need to hear it again either.
Counselor Washington?
Okay, thank you. Hi, Chief, how are you doing? Good to see you again. So Chief, I'm familiar with the history and the circumstances behind why this is before us. And unequivocally, I personally support it. I've heard some of the tape, it's sickening. However, I do have a, I do have a question for you. Some of our residents, you know, we live in a multicultural society. Some of our residents may consider involving public safety, calling the police culturally inappropriate, maybe even improper. I think that it's important that not only we view this from our cultural lens, but as best we can, if possible, view it from others' cultural lens. So my question for you is, could adopting this new code discourage the behavior in our residents that we want to encourage them to call the police and authorities in times of danger or situations that threaten life and or property? If so, how can we mitigate this?
Well, it doesn't help that we have a newspaper article that's out with clickbait for a, for a headline that just says that we would like to criminalize calling nine one one. So I think there's going to have to be a reach out to the community. There's going to have to be an education process for the community. I, for one, am putting myself out there to have additional chat with the chiefs to talk about this in different locations around the city. I don't want anyone to be afraid to ever call nine one one. And I, I think I mentioned this either in public safety meeting or in open meeting the last time that I find it quite the contrary throughout the whole entire valley, that more likely than not, people are afraid to call nine one one or don't want to bother us or they don't think it's, what if it's not what I think it is? I don't want to, to have a police officer being taken off the road to go do something. This is something that, that we need to address across the board and not just culturally. Everybody needs to know that we need to know what's going on. They, the citizen are the eyes and ears of this police department and we are pretty much useless without them. We need people to call. So I foresee us setting up dates in the near future to do multiple talks around the city with groups that want to come and, and listen to me blabber about this. But I also think that I'm going to be working with the city PIO and the police department PIO to come up with a education campaign that we put out, not just once and not just twice, but it needs to be an ongoing thing to where we are encouraging people to call nine one one. It's a problem. It doesn't matter if they, they are questioning themselves on whether it's rises the level of nine one one. We, we love to take those calls. The dispatchers that are in here love to take those calls. That's what they live for. That's what we live for. So I think bridging the gap between, you know, our wishes, this law and the entire city. I think that's an important thing because, you know, if we just rely on scrolling through a website and see a headline, it was actually pretty scary. You got to actually read deep into the story to find out what we're really trying to do. So I hope that answers your question and I do share the concerns. I don't want anybody to ever feel like they can't call nine one one for any reason. So.
Thank you, Chief. Excellent plan.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, I had similar concerns at our last council meeting where it's, it's not that I'm so much concerned that a police officer really would, or, or someone who's a dispatcher, et cetera, would actually target someone who's calling in with a good faith effort to report on something there. They call nine one one, maybe they shouldn't have. The example I gave was, you know, say someone, someone's car alarm goes off down the street. It's annoying, but now you're worried you go out and just poke around, you don't see anything. But it's an annoying car alarm. So you call nine one one to report a noise complaint. They go, you know, noise complaints, they're not necessarily an emergency where we need to send out the whole fire department. So, you know, I was just worried that could someone be afraid that they made the wrong call by this, that they would be persecuted in some way. And I, I hadn't seen the red line until today that, that showed some of the differences from what we saw last time. But my concerns were alleviated when I saw the, what I believe is a new part of section one, section one C, that specifically says, nothing in this chapter shall be construed or interpreted to impose criminal liability on any person who makes a good faith request for emergency assistance, et cetera. It'd be pretty hard for someone, someone to have to have a really serious vendetta against someone to take that to court and say, no, they called about that car alarm because they were trying to disrupt the system. And it's like one call, you know, that's a pretty clear good faith effort to try to contact someone who they thought was right. Oh, sorry, I guess it's not nine one one. So anyway, my, my concerns were very much alleviated by that solution to that. And just on the, the briefly on the perception of our police and is there a concern from our community? Maybe that could be the case. Just, I, I always reflect back on when I had a popped tire and a police officer pulled over and helped me change it. Like, yeah. Our police officers are not just slapping cuffs on people. They're out there to make our community safer and a better place. And I, I'd love for them to be our friends.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? CNN, then we'll go to vote. All those in favor?
I, I'm sorry, I do one just point of order. Councilman Walton said that he needed to hear the call. And I don't think that we should proceed unless Councilman Walton is comfortable proceeding. I, my, my personal opinion is I, I hear everybody's points. I think Councilman Holloway's point is a really good one. We, that the, the laws that we have to pass are for the future and not just for individual situations. Great, I thought it was an excellent argument for me, but I don't think that we can just move forward without addressing Councilman Walton's concerns.
At this point, I withdraw my request.
Okay.
A good, good point. Okay, we'll go to vote then regarding the misuse of the nine one one response system. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So motion passes unanimously and. What is the? Thank you for ordinance twelve ninety. So excellent, thank you. Thank you, Chief. So we still have a long agenda, so you don't have to feel obligated to stay. Thank you. Okay, next ordinance is AB twenty four dash zero five four, emergency housing code amendment. This is the first reading of ordinance twelve ninety. Counselor Washington, would you please read the introduction?
Introduction, House Bill twelve twenty requires the cities to find, requires the cities to find several specific types of supportive housing and shelter uses in their land use code and specifies what zones those uses must be allowed in. The proposed text amendments would bring the SMC into compliance with the requirements of House Bill twenty. Down here. Okay, proposed action. Move to adopt ordinance number twelve ninety one, amending various selection, various sections of chapter seventeen ten, seventeen fifty five of the Snoqualmie municipal code to satisfy the requirements of House Bill twelve twenty.
Right.
Second. Oh, that's.
Yeah. Although we're not voting on it tonight though, but thank you for reading the motion. Okay, is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, raise your hand. CNN. We do have community development director Emily Artetia is present to answer any questions. Counselor Johnson?
I'd just like to direct counsel to page one hundred forty seven in your packet. I believe that that's kind of the business end of the changes that are being proposed.
Counselor, do you want an overview of this or what would be helpful? CNN, yes.
I would like an overview.
Okay.
Good evening, council members. Emily Artetia, Community Development Director. Today we have Andrew Levens, our contract land use planner here to provide the overview for you. Andrew?
Good evening, council members. Like Director Artetia said, my name's Andrew Levens. I'm a land use planning consultant and I've been helping the community development department out with this proposed text amendment. The background of this amendment is that back in two thousand twenty one, the state passed a requirement that all cities planning under the Growth Management Act must incorporate certain depth, certain, must incorporate and define certain types of permanent or supportive, supportive housing uses in their land use code. As part of that, they're also required to allow those uses in certain zones in the city. So. Here is that page one forty seven of your agenda packet. And if you are all right with it, I'll just go ahead and walk you through this matrix demonstrating what's required and what's proposed. So there are four definitions that the city would be required to add to its land use code, those being emergency housing, emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. So you can see here in these top two, the top two rows here, we, the city of Snoqualmie currently does not have a use defined that meets the requirements of, is that are now required by the state. Similarly, with the permanent supportive housing, there is nothing to address the longer term supportive housing needs that the state requires. Currently, the city of Snoqualmie does have a definition of transitional housing. However, we are proposing that definition be modified to reflect the language that the state requires. And then the last three rows here are discussing where those uses may, must be allowed as part of bringing code and the code into compliance with the requirements of HB twelve twenty. The high points of that are that emergency housing, emergency and emergency shelter must be allowed in the city's land use table in any zone where motels or hotels are currently allowed. And permanent supportive housing and transitional housing must be allowed in any zone where, any zone where residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. So the thought process there is that emergency shelter and emergency housing uses would tend to have the types of impacts that you could associate with a hotel. They have a more transient nature and people just coming and going. Whereas permanent supportive housing uses and transitional housing uses are what you might think of when you think about a part, like an apartment building that maybe has a doctor's off, office on the ground floor that is available to use, use by the residents. So walking through, I'll walk through the red line of the proposed.
I think we have one question, Counselor Benson?
Yeah, I, do we have definitions for these four types of housing that you could, I, I wasn't able to find them in the document?
Sure.
Doesn't mean they're not there.
It's page one thirty nine.
Yeah.
Thirty nine?
What, yeah, page one thirty nine of your agenda packet, we have the strike through and underline of the proposed text. So to meet the requirements, to satisfy the state requirement for emergency housing and emergency shelter uses, the community development department is proposing to combine those two uses into a single definition classification, because in a city the size of Snoqualmie, we would expect to see this type of use coming, coming into form that way. The distinction there might be a nuance that we don't, we don't believe has value in our land use code. We've confirmed this approach with the Washington Department of Commerce and they also agree that it is appropriate. So emergency housing or shelter would be an indoor use directed at people who have higher rates of housing insecurity, who need immediate and short term housing support. Permanent supportive housing. This could take many forms. It could be a standalone, single family home. It could be a multifamily apartment building. It could look, it could be a townhouse. But it's essentially a subsidized lease housing that does not have a limit on the length of stay. This type of supportive housing use is would be typically directed at people who have lower, a relatively lower risk of housing insecurity, but face barriers to obtaining traditional forms of housing due to a wide range of things, for example, a disability or behavioral behavioral health issues. For the definition of special needs housing, this is currently a definition that exists within these, in the municipal code. However, it references transitional housing facilities, not as a use, but just as a general, just as a general type of housing. We're proposing that this be struck from the definition of special needs housing as transitional housing facilities will now exist in the land use classification table as a standalone use. And then finally, transitional housing facilities, like I said, this definition currently exists in the municipal code. However, we are just proposing to modify the language to be in line with the state requirement. And then finally, scroll down onto page one forty, you'll see the only proposed modifications to the land use table where emergency housing or shelter is permitted in any use where, any zone where motel or hotel uses are currently allowed. And your permanent supportive housing and transitional housing is now permitted in any zone where residential dwelling units are allowed.
I have a question regarding the. I have a question regarding the, the special needs. Looks like it limits the home up to six residents there. Is that a state requirement? Or can it be eight, for instance, or ten?
That I am not sure about because that definition was preexisting in the land use code, so I'm not exactly sure um, what led it to be enacted there. That's definitely something that um, we can investigate and see if there is a uh, minimum resident requirement. That's, just to be clear, is not really part of the uh, HB twelve twenty requirements. We're just modifying it because it references transitional housing facilities and that is becoming a standalone use.
Okay, thank you. Council, do you have any questions? This is the first readings. We have a chance to read more or some, ask more questions during the next couple of weeks. Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Is committee, committee reports? Is there a public safety committee report?
Nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, community development, so AB twenty four dash zero five six, motion on economic development element. So Council Washington, you went to read the introduction and motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Introduction, the economic development element was the fifth of six comprehensive plan elements to be reviewed by the city council as part of the comprehensive plan periodic review update twenty forty four. The council has expressed a desire, a desire to acknowledge the draft work completed to date as part of an ongoing review process. Down here. Okay, so the proposed action, move to accept the council roundtable and any council meeting edits on the economic development element goal and policy shown in exhibit one as part of an ongoing review of the city comprehensive plan periodic review update twenty forty four, subject to integration and harmonization with the other comprehensive plan elements under review.
Second.
It's been moved by what, Council of Washington, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway on the motion on the comprehensive plan economic development element. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. So this element was reviewed during the roundtable on April twenty second. And then we finished the review during roundtable earlier this evening. So council, do you have any questions regarding this? Council Johnson?
Only thing I wanted to mention was um, I think that with Jay, we'd left just kind of slightly vague. I mean, I think we gave decent direction to uh, staff as to what we're looking for, so I'm, I'm happy to move forward. Um, we're gonna get another chance to look at this before we adopted formally at the end of the year. Um, so if staff decided to throw in some random event that they made up the name of on the spot, we could bring it up then and say, you know, I don't know if it's a real thing. So I am, I'm confident that staff could come up with a list of our events.
Any other comments? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? Excellent. So the okay, economic development element and comprehensive pan, plan passes, so. Excellent. We have one more to go and we will have that on our agenda at the next council meeting. Okay, next is from Parks and Public Works. First of all, is there anything else for community development?
Nothing further at this time, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. Okay, Parks and Public Works, we have AB twenty four dash zero five eight Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration. Council Benson, would you please read the summary and motion?
This agenda bill is to approve, is to approve the use of OTAC Incorporated's professional service, services to evaluate the structural integrity, paint condition, and scour repair of Meadow Brook Bridge. Additionally, OTAC will review the proposed work by King County in the vicinity of the bridge to gauge its potential effects on scour permitting requirements and assist in refining the scope of the capital improvement project. Scroll, 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 scroll. Uh, and the motion is to approve Task Order twenty with OTAC Incorporated Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Miss Benson and second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any public comment regarding this item for the Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration? Seeing none. So tonight we have our project engineer, Hin Ahmed, um, present to give an overview of this item. Hin?
Thank you, Mayor. So uh, this contract is to use the professional service of OTAC Inc. to evaluate the structural integrity of Meadow Brook Bridge. So Meadow Brook Bridge was a part of the CIB for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And the CIB scope was load rating and then bent in the bridge. Uh, the load rating, uh, after the road rating, the bridge was um, uh, restricted for uh, ta, uh, some types of trucks and some lots of trucks as well. So for this, we're using the service of OTAC to see what's the best, best option on the CIB going forward for this project. And also King County is doing their revetment project uh, near the bridge and the work they're gonna do in their vetment will affect the bridge pier and would affect the scour there. So uh, the scope of this include also coordination with uh, with King County and also gauging the effect of the King County project on our CIB project.
Council, thank you, Hin. Does it, do you have any questions for our project engineer? Alright, thank you. Seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? Alright, so the motion passes in approving the Meadow Brook Bridge Restoration. Next, third item is Parks and Public Works Committee as the King Street closure discussion.
We're not doing the reclaimed water.
Uh, there's one right before that, I think, there, Mayor.
Yeah, the reclaimed water reservoir project update.
Oh, there is. Yep. Okay, next item is reclaimed water reservoir, reservoir project update. And we have our project engineer, Andrew Vining.
Good evening, council. I'm Andrew Vining, project engineer, uh, Public Works. And tonight I'd like to uh, present present an update to our reclaimed water improvements project. Which are planned for uh, twenty twenty five near Eagle Lake. So the reclaimed water system, the city operates includes water, wastewater that's treated to such a high standard that it can safely be used for non-drinking water purposes such as landscape irrigation. This includes sand filtration and UV disinfection. Reclaimed water is used to irrigate the city business park, uh, Snoqualmie Parkway, select the parks, including, including community park and parts of the ROA. The main idea behind reclaimed water is that wastewater is a resource. It encourages water conservation. It's available uh, when, when, during drought uh, frequent months and it provides environmental benefits to the Snoqualmie River. It's also part of our water use efficiency program. The upcoming reclaimed improvements include a four hundred thousand gallon reservoir and pump station located near Eagle Lake and will bring our reclaimed water system up State Department of Ecology and State Department of Health standards. The capacity of these improvements are built into approximately two thousand ERUs or approximately fifteen percent of our peak potable water demand. This is a significant utility project that we will be including in our upcoming utility rate study. And the estimated project cost is nine million dollars. Our current CIP has allotted three point three million in this and we recently made the state funding uh, list for a low interest loan for six point eight million to support the project. The loan interest rates vary between point six and one point two uh, percent. The final state funding list will come out twenty twenty four. And uh, this is part of a a mandate which is part of our, our NPDS discharge permit, which uh, requires that we complete these improvements prior to June twenty twenty six. So we'll be moving forward pretty quickly on this project. Um, and it's a significant investment in our reclaimed system, which we've been operating for twenty years, but this will be the biggest project since its original construction in the late nineties. And with that, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Council Johnson?
Yeah, so is this uh, project going to be basically like a, a big water tank?
Exactly, yeah. It'll be very similar to uh, reservoirs that we have in the city. Um, we have some off uh, in the Jacobia street neighborhood. It'll be a concrete tank.
And this is near, follow up, couple of follow ups actually. Uh, and this is near Eagle Lake, but it's not like we're gonna stick it in the middle of Eagle Lake.
That's correct. Yep. Part of the project is separating out water that is stored in Eagle Lake, so we'll be, we'll be locating it. Uh, we're looking at an area along Ridge Street adjacent to uh, the overhead power lines.
Now, um, the ones that are by Jacobia have a pretty nice uh, shield of trees. I mean, you actually probably wouldn't even see them if you weren't looking for them out, honestly. Uh, are we gonna do something similar to that? Because I could imagine the houses over there wouldn't necessarily, and homeowners over there and uh, their values wouldn't have it's gigantic tank right in the middle of the neighborhood. So is there gonna be some sort of shielding or is there a plan for that?
We're in about thirty percent design and we have included some tree buffer in our design along um, arterial corridors, Ridge Street, so that you're not seeing the reservoir um, if you're traveling down Ridge Street. It's likely that a good portion of the reservoir will be underground as well, so it's not gonna be as high as reservoirs that you normally see. If you're driving down Eagle Lake Drive, we actually have an irrigation pump station there that is pretty hidden from the public. Most of it's underground already, so it may be something similar to that design.
Thank you. Council Button?
Thank you, Mr. Vani. Uh, my question is, what is the risk if we do not move forward with this project?
Absolutely. Um, so this, this project is being driven by uh, an existing state permit that we have, our NPDS permit, which regulates uh, water that we produce at our water reclamation facility. That permit is renewed on a six-year cycle. And uh, in addition to regulating what we discharge to the river, it re, it includes uh, requirements that we have to improve our water reclamation facility and in this place, our reclaimed water system and and that permit allows us to produce up to one point five million gallons of water annually, uh, of reclaimed water. Uh, sorry, not annually, one point five million gallons each day of reclaimed water, pretty significant volume. And uh, in that, uh, this has been in negotiation a long time, but we currently, after back and forth with uh, the state for five years, we do have requirements with deadlines um, in that to uh, continue producing reclaimed water, we have to build this reservoir. We submitted an engineering report on this project last year that was approved by the state and uh, if we were not to move forward with this project, we would likely need to uh, seize our operation of reclaimed water uh, in, in these city areas that I've discussed, the community uh, park, the business park, uh, the Parkway and select city parks. And either stop irrigating those or if possible, uh, switch those over to potable usage, which would uh, be a pretty significant burden on our potable system during those drought frequent months, August, September, October. So part of our evaluation in that engineering report last year was the potential of uh, switching all those to potable and uh, we really did not have that potable available. As part of, Snoqualmie Ridge was built with water conservation in mind, which included the use of reclaimed water. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, Council Benson?
Our city does a fantastic job of reclaiming water. They do a, a really amazing job of reclaiming water. They've saved so much water for the city over the years. It's incredible. They've done it since the turn of the century. And there has never been a problem with our reclaimed water. Nobody's ever gotten sick, nobody's ever died, no, nobody's ever suddenly started to wanna listen to dubstep. Nothing has gone wrong as a result of our water reclamation. And now the state is saying we need to come up with nine million dollars over the next twenty five years to fix this problem. And that's not the end of it. Before the twenty five years is up, it will need to be magic water in some way. There's something that we'll have to do that, that will make the water even more amazing and unnecessarily expensive. And in answer to your question, Councilman Johnson, everybody in this city is going to see this stupid tank every time they pay their water bill. Every time they pay their water bill, they're gonna get screwed. They're gonna get screwed out of money to pay to fix a problem that does not exist. It doesn't exist. And this is just phony baloney bureaucrats making us pay to
Let's hear from our city attorney.
Councilmember Kim Pratt, I'm sorry, I would just ask that if we're discussing potential risk to the city, um, you know, instigating of lawsuits, you might wanna discuss this in executive session in the future.
I'm not, I'm not discussing that. I'm, I'm discussing the fact that nothing has ever gone wrong with our water in the history that we've been reclaiming water. That is, that is a fact. We've got, we, we, show me one incident, one health incident, one death, one problem at all that we're fixing with this. And yeah, I, sure, there are people up here who want this new tank for, for more water. But that doesn't change the fact that we have never had a problem with our water reclamation system. Our city does a fantastic job of reclaiming water, cleaning water, reusing water. It's excellent. And this is this is a theft of nine million dollars. Not, no, 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 not my nine million dollars. There's a pump that we have to replace. And you said that's gonna cost two to two and a half million dollars to replace?
Yeah, approximately two and a half.
Two and a half million dollars. So of nine million dollars, about six and a half million dollars is not that pump. This is, this is, this is wrong that we are being forced to do this. It is wrong. It is wrong and every citizen in City of Snoqualmie is getting screwed.
Mayor Pro Tim Hall?
Some time ago, and I don't know what agency it was, decided city should have chlorinated water. It came down again, the breakdown of the, or the passage of laws goes from federal, state, county to city and you must adhere all the way up, okay? Um, I have to assume that the State Department of Ecology has reasons for doing, saying that reclaimed water needs to be protected from contamination if you're going to use it for irrigation in public areas. Okay, um, and that has come down. From there, you have a couple of choices. Again, you can either stop irrigating. You can irrigate with potable water, but as you said, that's gonna go into our, what water, you know, we only have so many water rights and so many water uses. And right now the potable water is not in there. It will cause us issues. Uh, the city attorney, I think, is, is hinting at that if you feel this is grossly egregious, we could take legal action. I'm not, I don't think we're proposing that. I don't think we would have a good chance of it. Um, not that I'd chew it over. Not that I'd chew it over, but I didn't even have a chance of it, okay? So again, we can either stop irrigating. We can shift over to use potable water and figure out how to fill the deficit that this will result in in our water plan. Or we can make these changes and continue to use that reclaimed water, which is actually of benefit to us to use in the irrigation system. We have the water. It's much better to use the reclaimed water than it is to use potable water, which costs you more to make than the reclaimed water. Okay, so, but. Agreed, the changing regulation, I may not know the reason for and everything else, but I don't know that we have standing to go and say no. We have options after that, and that's either protect the reclaimed water from contamination or stop irrigating or irrigate with potable water. And I think of those, the least hurtful is to protect the reclaimed water from contamination, which is the project being proposed.
Councilor Cotton.
I do certainly think and agree with my fellow council members that this is not a palatable thing we wanna bring before our citizens and residents about, you know, raising utilities for paying nine million dollars. And this has even gone up in price from when I think I first heard about it. But it seems that being basically strong-armed by the Department of Health and Department of Ecology to follow the mandates, since we don't qualify for the chlorination of how that would work in our irrigation systems, is my understanding. That this, while it's unpalatable to us to have to go through this, this, this process and this cost, it is something that, my understanding is, we'll actually have a life the storage of thirty to fifty years. This is what we're hoping to get out of a lifetime for this, this project. So I guess that is the one saving grace is it's gonna almost double, you know, the life of the previous project. But that doesn't mean we like the cost.
Andrew.
I appreciate all of those comments and I understand where you guys are coming from. The only thing I would maybe add to the conversation, our wastewater operator, Tom Holmes, told me that the city of Still Call Me is the first Class A distribution system in Washington State. So we were actually the first permitted one in nineteen ninety-eight. Over twenty years ago. And we haven't, as I mentioned, we haven't really invested in, in the Class A system since then. In the process of updating our reclaimed water system plan to capture this project, capture future smaller investments, but invest in the utility for the next twenty years. And that's partly, I believe, what these state regulations are about is building confidence in reclaimed water so that it can be used for more uses potentially in the future. You're seeing that in California a lot, areas that have more, that are more susceptible to drought. And we may not be seeing it now, but by building this confidence now, that may be what the state is and what their intentions are here.
Councilor Watten.
Thank you. As I sit here and listen, you have to think, first of all, I have a mind of a banker. So I like money and I like counting money and I'm not a scientist. And sometimes I'm suspicious of, of science because I don't understand it. And I can appreciate Councilmember Benson's approach to this. But I think there's probably, if, and I did a quick Google search, by the way. I think there may be other factors, environmental factors, that I'm not very familiar with. And I looked it up and there's pathogens, there's avian influenza and other things that may be behind the science dictating that this is something we should do. And I think probably the comfort of, of us as council members is understanding a little bit more about the science. And we've got Councilmember Johnson, who can explain things beyond my, my wisdom. But I think that might give us a little more comfort to understand what is the driver behind it. Is it the EPA and they've got science that says you need to do these things in order to protect not only the environment, but birds and other things and people. That might be a little bit more helpful for us to understand them.
It might be for me, anyway. Or maybe a twenty dollar "Don't lick the grass" sign would do it.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, since there's, this is from the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so if there's someone at the state who has decided to do this and they need our citizens to pay an extra several million dollars in their utility bill, can they come and explain it to us? What the reasoning is? Can we get them to come here and explain to the public why they think that this is an important thing for, for us to do?
Maybe we should have an executive session on this.
Why?
Maybe we should. Councilor Cotton.
In answer to Councilmember Watten's Google search, as the veterinarian in the group, I can tell you, yes, there are pathogens and the different types, parasites, viruses, bacteria. But I think the big concern at this point, looking to the future, is that with some of these pathogens, we have seen much more of a mutation rate where things are now becoming what we call zoonotic, transmissible from animal species to a human. And so the precautions that are being taken are, even though we've never had one, don't give me that look.
I'm giving you the look.
The look of, yeah. But anyway, it's, it certainly seems that yes, it would be nice to have more knowledge about it, but I can see the fundamental medical background in it.
Councilor Watten.
I kind of. Somewhere the family tree.
I, I agree with my fellow council member, Councilmember Johnson, that I would like to have more understanding. If there's a medical reason or an environmental reason, I'd like to know.
We also have Mr. Hamlin online and I think he worked with Department of Ecology early on, along with the previous mayor, on trying to figure out lots of other options than spending a lot on capital.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address this. Sorry, I can't be there today, folks. I'm kinda sick and I don't wanna get you guys sick. But I agree with the mayor that this is something that we should probably address in executive session. There's some additional information that I'd like to pass on to you that I think might be helpful and with this decision. And we'll leave it at that.
Move to go to executive session.
Move by Councilor Johnson, second Councilor Chris- Christensen to go into executive session. Any discussion? Rep. Tim Hallway.
Sales was discussion tonight. Can we do that with the rest of the executive sessions at the tail end of the agenda?
I'm pumped up.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, let's get to the rest and then go have fun.
He likes to dance. I like it.
That's fine, we will combine it with another one that it has the same RCW, so we will do that. Okay? So you have a motion on the table, though, to go right into executive session in a second. When you withdraw your motion or?
Yeah, sure, I'll withdraw.
And withdraw the second?
Will you modify your motion?
Yeah, it's probably cleaner to modify the motion. So otherwise, we'd have to, I mean.
It's already there, so we will add it as a second executive session to it.
Okay.
Rep. Tim Hallway.
Do tears of turtles. May I make a motion to the motion on the table that we do have the executive session, but we have it at the tail end of the agenda? May I have a second on the amendment of the motion?
Isn't that where it is already?
No.
It is.
He doesn't have to withdraw his motion. We can accept the amendment to the motion and then the motion and then we're at the end of the agenda.
All right.
So let's take two votes real quick.
Okay, so the first, first one is.
Is on the amendment to move the executive session to end of agenda.
Okay, all in favor of the I?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, that passes.
Which was his motion?
To have it in the first place.
Just to have it in the first place. All in favor of the I?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. Motion's passed.
King Street closure.
Thank you, Andrew, and we'll have you stick around for the executive session. Thank you. Okay. Next item, King Street closure discussion by CIP manager, Dylan Gamble.
Good evening again. I am trying to get my Zoom to let me screen share so I can give you a quick presentation on what I'd like to discuss. Hope this catch up with me. Okay, all right. So what I'd like to discuss here tonight and what this, this is your PowerPoint presentation will be about is some considerations that council could make in how to reuse or utilize differently the area between King Street, I'm sorry, the area along, in, on King Street between Highway two oh two or Railroad Avenue and Maple Avenue. The area highlighted in that purple box there. So this is aerial photo. You could see the gravel lot there that people use to park on the top right. And you could see the Northwest Railway Museum kind of in the bottom right next to the box. I'm sure you're all very familiar. The location, here's just an in-person view if you're standing in the middle of the street, driving a Google car. That's this perspective around the left, you're on the highway. Yeah, so what I wanted to get to for this, this evening's discussion is some, some alternative options than just leaving the road as is, as a two-way, non-collector, non-arterial street, which is to say that our comprehensive plan does not indicate this road as a major thoroughfare. So it's not considered or intended to be used as such. With that in mind, we in the, on staff side, have come up with a couple of considerations that council could begin to review. And those are these four. So one being status quo, no changes. We just leave things the way they are, as is. Seasonal, siege, seasonal closures would be a kind of a temporary action that we could consider with the special event permit and with the city to close it for just this spring. Spring to fall, so that would include the summer. We can include, close the entire thing, we could close it for just weekends, we could do all sorts of stuff. But essentially, we have a lot of options of flexibility that you could consider there. Or we could also look at a single lane, so one direction of travel, either coming from two oh two or coming from Maple. You can think of it either way. Staff has a couple of considerations and if you really wanna go down that road, we'd be happy to kinda outline some recommendations on how to get there. And the last one would be a permanent closure of the road. This would allow the city to look into expansions of the Railroad Avenue, I'm sorry, the Railroad Park, which is right adjacent to it, as well as any sort of expanded farmer's market, food truck vending, as well as multi-use space that the Northwest Railway Museum could use and other special events. And we have the special events, Nicole Wee was here. So if you'd like to ask her some more questions on that. And then I'll just jump over to kinda some of the considerations that got staff to this point. So the main one being that we were reviewing the improvements to the railroad crossings at both the Parkway and at King Street. In that process of reviewing it and working with Wash Dot, they brought up the question of, does the city even need this road in intersection? It is, as it stands, a point of conflict between rails and pedestrians and cars. So as we're working through this improvement to reduce the likelihood for car collisions with rails and pedestrian collisions, the question was brought up, is this needed? And so we're kind of bringing that to council. And as part of that consideration, we're still pursuing those railroad crossings. Any version, whether temporary, permanent, one-way, all those interactions have still the potential for conflict. So we're still gonna pursue those, the crossings when the rail comes out onto the tracks. This is trying to kinda indicate the revitalization efforts that we could see as an impact of choosing to do one of the three non-status quo options to provide the city with more avenues for farmer's markets and especially when we think of food trucks and the park, how it kind of expands towards the road there, but the utilization's maybe a little underwhelming. And then the last part is to think of the considerations pros and cons wise. We have thought through a lot of the pros. Happily, there's some low-cost options for us to get going on if we'd like to produce something in that avenue. But we have considered some of the cons, which are that we expect there will be some impacts to traffic, both to flow and to really local neighbors who use that road to get to their house very specifically. We would expect to close one road and have the flow go around to the other two, two streets here, River and Fur. And any closure of King, whether it's one-way or anything of that nature, would have those kinds of impacts. But we would not suspect they would be high. It's not a high-use road. Again, harkening back to the comprehensive plans, transportation element, we have never utilized that road as a major collector. So that's a lot of speak for me. So I'm here to answer any questions. I can flip through any slides and I'm happy to bring in any other staff members to kind of give more illustrations or descriptions.
Councilor Christensen.
Generally speaking, I love the idea, but I'd like to hear specifically what the feedback has been from the downtown merchants because I suspect that they have weighed in on this and have opinions that we should be considering.
Dylan, no, I presented on your behalf. I presented this to the downtown merchants last week and I have to say that the response or the reaction was fairly positive. In fact, they have been using, we use the food truck analogy, you know, that's not what we all might. It's not the only thing we might do with that space on King Street, but it's one of the elements. And food trucks is something that they've been bringing in different weekends to, and I can go into the reasons why. But overall, the downtown merchants were favorable of this. Or I will say, at least maybe we try it for the summer to see how it goes before we would go into maybe a permanent situation.
Councilor Johnson.
Yeah, I think that, okay. Should ask before I make assumptions. What would be the benefits of going down to one lane? There won't be too much purpose of going down to one lane. Enlighten me.
Yeah, this is part of, we were thinking of all the options and making sure we didn't leave anything unturned or a consideration on the table. One lane would still allow a direction of traffic flow. So if we were to say, make it flow from two oh two through to Maple, maybe that would reduce a lot of the negative impacts to the local residents right there. But generally speaking, it's a very low-use road. And so I don't think that the one-way produces some sort of grand slam in terms of opportunity and value.
Yep.
So then I'm leaning more toward the idea of trying it out for the summer when we have our highest volumes of folks visiting the downtown area. Every time you have a car crossing, you reduce the number of people that are willing to walk that direction. That's just a fact. So reducing that during those times sounds like a pretty cool thing. That said, that does impact the people who live there. And maybe the people who live in that area might not want to always have it closed all the time forever and ever. Maybe during those months, when you have fewer people, especially Monday through Friday, going to visit our downtown. When it's really cold and it's raining sideways, you're not gonna get a whole lot of people downtown shopping. But the residents might really like the access. So I like the idea of doing this as a trial. I like the idea of doing this, um, as a trial to start off over the summer and then, uh, moving toward, if it's really popular, it seems great and people are genuinely on board with it, maybe even move to it being more permanent. But certainly as a trial thing, this sounds like a cool idea.
Thank you. So we had Congressman Cotton and then Congressman Christensen.
Yes, um, I like the concept, the, the King Alley concept, I think it was, um, of at least the, the trial over the, the, the kind of busy tourist time, uh, since there's only about six parking areas on that street, I don't think you're going to be disrupting things a lot. Um, but I, I think that there's a lot more that can be done with closing it as far as being able to implement the whole street for various items than, than doing the, the one-lane project to me doesn't make sense at all. So, so I don't think, um, you might disrupt some of the Smokey Joe regulars, but, um, for as far as their parking, uh, but they do have a lot in the other side streets as well. So.
Ambassador Christian.
I'm in support. Yep.
Um, I, I agree. I also don't want to see just it go to one lane. I don't think that that would help. I think that if anything, given the population and the fact that, you know, thirty percent of our, our folks that live here are under the age of eighteen, I don't really want to see food trucks and farmers markets with a car whizzing by. Um, even if it's for that short stretch, um, I do think this would be a great idea and especially help out the downtown, especially with the loss. Uh, be it temporary, hopefully, of our poor businesses there. I think that it would be really helpful. It's my understanding that the numbers have been down for the railway as well as some of the other merchants. And it's my understanding as well, but in the height of summer and other times, um, the kitchens and the existing restaurants aren't able to necessarily meet the needs of the customers coming in, which can lead to longer wait times and make it a less favorable dining, uh, experience. And so those combined with the fact that the place that I lived in London had this almost exact thing where they would close down the main street on weekends so that you could have additional tables and farmer's markets and art and things like that. I think it'd be a fantastic addition to our community.
I think this is an opportunity that a lot of communities and a lot of cities did this during COVID. Um, I think for Councilor Holloway is the only one here, not to Mayor Ross. We tried it for one weekend. We didn't do it the right way and it didn't go well. It was a great weekend. Um, however, um, this would be the right way, you know, to try it. So I think we're maybe a little bit behind the eight ball as a community for doing something like this, but there's been much success with these similar programs and other communities around us. And I just wanted to reiterate what you said, because I think you heard it at the Parks and Health Committee meeting. And we are down for restaurants currently and the restaurants that are there oftentimes when it's very busy downtown, don't have the capacity to serve the people that are in town and to turn it around quickly and efficiently. Um, and I just want to assure everybody that if food trucks were brought in, we would be strategic, thoughtful and targeted. We would not be bringing in we, meaning if it was myself helping them or the downtown merchants, bringing in food trucks that were competitive to the restaurants that are in town.
Council Washington? We both hear him.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I, I agree that the one-way street could probably be cumbersome, considering that most of the streets here are, you know, the two ways. So I, I'd get confused. Um, I completely agree with you. I mean, we're just seeing that up and down the West Coast, frankly, especially after COVID, that, um, some of these more unique cities have gone to a kind of a small promenade. So that's kind of what I hear and it's very exciting to hear that.
Airport Tim Holloway?
Uh, can you back up a slide? So, um, one, I think all those uses can be done as, uh, temporary event permitting go through. So I think we, I'm, I'm trying to couch what I, what I guess I would prefer in the go-forward is that we try that as far as temporary closures, not necessarily putting concrete blocks up this summer, but temporary closures to fill. My concern is I do not think all of these, these uses will fill the calendar year-round. Nobody's going to go to a food truck in November. It'd be hard to do. All right. So, and I, I don't want that street to go, it, it should serve use when it can serve use. Uh, like to have it service use, but when it can't service use, it should serve its use as a road. I, I do. There might be imaginative way to get some angled parking in there if you want one way, and then you could make the argument just to throw that out, but I don't know if there's enough room on that street to do that. You guys figure that out. The, the other concern I have is, um, you've got the Woodman Lodge building there. If we were to block this off, you've in essence, what little bit of storefront they do have is, uh, now off-street.
They're not currently open.
They're not currently open, but the building's there. Would love something to go there.
Correct. Absolutely.
Um, and, and don't want this to be a hindrance that, uh, yes, you can open a business here, but the only thing you'll one, they're not going to get much parking right in front of the place anyway. It's like two spots, but you have, you are off the beaten path to get to you. Okay? Um, and I, I don't know if my val, my concern is valid. You may tell me otherwise, but, uh, I, I'm for let's do the temp, uh, particularly to help the businesses now and the augment usage, bring in people. Let's go for it. Not ready to say let's close that street off.
And with, uh, we could consider to alleviate that concern, some special um, areas right in front of the Woodman, for example, for use by whatever comes whenever it does come. Um, if they wanted outdoor seating, for example. Since the roads closed, we would own the right-of-way and access to it. We wouldn't obviously put it on the railroad tracks, but it's a little too far anyway, but
We might actually stir some interest in the Woodman if we do this. Maybe if someone would come in. Um, might I just kind of pick your brain a little bit? Are you suggesting, there's a couple of ways we could do this. Would you be open to, I mean, talk to this about Dylan yet? What if we did just Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, leave it open during the week? But I think it's best if you do something like that consistent so that drivers in the community knows, oh, is this the day I drive around? Is this the day? You know, something like that. Try it the three, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We would catch some groups throughout the summer that are already have special event permits. It's just a thought, I, because I don't know when you're, and when you're saying temporary, there's temporary use permit and then there's special event permits, but that's kind of haphazard throughout the rest of summer.
I'm just pushing, but let's not put con, concrete bollards there from June through August.
Right.
Okay, it's just temporary, however, we do that.
Council Benson and then Council Johnson.
Um, yeah, I, I personally, I agree with you. I think that if this ends up, yeah, if this ends up happening, it's going to be a total boon to that property that is, that used to be the Woodman Lodge. Um, and I think, I think it'd be fabulous for, I, I would love to see this as a test project that eventually we close. The, the biggest thing that I'm worried about is inconsistency in the way that the street works and that some, somebody's going to make a mistake. Somebody's going to get hurt because of that inconsistency. That's the biggest fear that I have. Um, but my hope is that we go with eventually closing that street down, turning it into King Street Park or whatever you decide to call it, uh, and, um, have it ready for FIFA. You know?
Council Johnson?
Yeah, that's, uh, this is all very encouraging conversation. Um, okay, uh, issue that we had the last time we tried this, and I know there were a number of issues, but one of the biggest things was that, uh, people went out there and they moved the barriers. So I'm going to have to, uh, to, to disagree with Councilmember Holloway. I, I think there has to be, uh, something that they can't move. It's, it's gotta be heavy.
If I can take a trip down memory lane with you as well. That was exactly, it blew my mind.
Yeah.
That people would think to move a road closed traffic barrier, but they did it on the bridge and downtown.
Yeah.
Literally just moved them out of the road. So.
Hardly believe if the people did that.
Literally. And I'm still not over it, as you can tell. Um, but I think maybe there's something between the road closure and a barricade because that created a very unsafe situation with both of those instances. So.
Is it follow?
Yeah, follow up on that. Just real, real quick, uh, when Issaquah was experimenting with this, and I'm not sure what they do now, uh, during the summers, if they've continued, but at least during, uh, COVID, uh, they only closed down on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, on Front Street and they had big chunks of concrete in the way and they haul them in and out each weekend. Uh, so if we went to, uh, all summer, leave them there all summer. It was on the weekends. I know it's a lot of work moving them back and forth. Maybe don't do that, but point being, um, that, uh, those didn't get moved.
Council Wharton?
I had the chance to talk with some of the downtown merchants and they've been very supportive. There's always this concern about food trucks competing with sit-down restaurants. If you've ever been to a food truck and you find out that it's eighteen dollars a person at a food truck versus twenty-four dollars sitting down, there are two different audiences. I think that the important part is being a former retailer myself for a decade. Um, activity breeds activity. The more that you have, the more offerings you have, the longer people will stay. And that's the whole idea behind this. In fact, I'd like to see the reactivation of Railroad Park for of festivals going on year-round, including holiday markets, farmer's markets, um, crafts, artisan fairs, because those things will help drive more business downtown. The greater the variety that you can turn over and having food trucks, having a different, um, array of food trucks, um, will be an attraction for the downtown. And the final comment is Fourth of July this last year was very disappointing for the people that came downtown to find no food options. And so this is a way of, of reactivating that. And, and I think that we could try it through the summer and see how it goes. Then consistency is the one thing that you need. Because when people expect it, then, you know, they will, they will adjust their, um, habits accordingly. But I think the variety is going to be very positive for everyone downtown and, and giving people a reason to come to downtown Snoqualmie is a great way of, of making the right decision.
Council Johnson?
Uh, if staff is just looking for, how's council feeling about this? What kind of direction? Uh, I'll just say that I, I'd be in favor of going for a, a summer closure and, um, let's just do it. Put up some big barriers in the way so people don't move them, give people consistency. They know what to expect when they get there. They go, okay, that's closed for now. And if someone calls grumpy, you just say, well, they're only closed for, uh, the summer as a trial project. Um, and, uh, if there's a lot of negative feedback, it doesn't do anything good, then maybe we'll never do it again. But, um, that way it isn't just, hey, your street's forever now. Uh, one last thought is that, uh, if this does become a permanent closure at some point, uh, it is important to, uh, get rid of the uh, street paving and make it look like a walking path. Um, that's, that's obviously down the road. Um, but, uh, cities that have gone in that direction have seen significantly more success. Once they get something that looks more like a brick pattern or cobbles or something to make it look like Western Europe.
Any other comments? Thank you. Thank you. Um, so we, council, we have been sitting for three hours. And so I'd like to take a five-minute break for everyone and come back at nine o'clock. Cause the next item is probably going to be a long discussion as well. So five-minute break? If you can pause recording, great. Thank you. All right, we took a quick break and it is now nine oh one PM. And the next item is Finance Administration Committee, um, the North Bend Police Services Contract Discussion. And we'll have Chief Lynch lead it off.
Evening again. So in the, uh, absence of our city administrator vacation, he asked me to present on this. Um, this has been presented, uh, twice now, once to Public Safety Committee and then once to F and A, uh, which sent it for the full council, um, consideration. So the first thing I want to do is I want to go through what makes up the meat and potatoes of our North Bend Snoqualmie interlocal agreement. This is a flat fee contract. So as it's written, when we signed this, this five-year contract in twenty nineteen, it started out that Snoqualmie would receive one point eight million dollars for the first year. And in increments, it would go up to what they are paying in twenty twenty-four at two point four million. And it calls for coverage of at least one officer on duty within the city limits for twenty-four hours, three hundred and sixty-five days. It also pays for eight police officer spots. Two sergeants, one records clerk and fifty percent of the school resource officer. Um, it has language in there that lays out for this money, what the citizens of North Bend would receive, and that is defined in the police services and associated duties. We provide, um, you know, traffic control, traffic stops, traffic enforcement. We do, um, everything that uh, the police department would do here in Snoqualmie, but over in North Bend for this contract. And the term may be extended upon mutual agreement. Um, we have done this now twice. Um, we've had this, um, this relationship with North Bend for, um, ten years now. And we're on the second five-year contract. It is due to, um, to expire December thirty-first of this year. Uh, and it's terminated, um, earlier. The next one, we have language in there that, um, has an automatic extension. And this is in the contract currently. Um, if this renewal agreement is not terminated during the term, as described in section four, this renewal agreement shall automatically renew for one or more additional five-year periods based upon the same terms and conditions set forth in the renewal agreement. Except there's going to be a five percent adjustment, um, throughout the life of that, that, um, contract agreement. Go to the next one. Now for termination, either party can decide that the relationship is not working and they can go somewhere else. But when they give a written, either us or North Bend gives a written, um, termination notification, that triggers an eighteen-month uh, termination wind down period. Um, so we would still provide police services for eighteen months after the request, uh, to move on. In the event that we are not able to agree, um, and this a, agreement is terminated, the compensation level for any holdover period between that provided for above shall be the com- compensatory rate of, uh, five percent. And that starts January first of twenty twenty-four. Um, so if this were to, um, we'd apply the five percent and we roll over to an automatic renewal. Um, North Bend would pay two point five five three million dollars for their police services from us. And there's language in the contract that's pre-negotiated. Um, and like I said, if we, this automatically renews, if we agree to automatically renew it, this language is already negotiated, the same staffing levels. Um, they would pay twelve percent, which they're doing now, of the salary for myself and twelve percent for the captain. Um, and they each pay their own dispatch services. Uh, they pay into the ER and R fund, fuel, repair and insurance costs for the vehicles that they own. Um, and it provides for office overhead, a space for the Snoqualmie Police Department to have as a work area in North Bend. Um, the language actually says City Hall, but we've been, um, used the, the uh, North Bend Annex over by the library for years, which we are about to switch to full-time station over at the um, Outlet Mall that I just signed a contract for yesterday. So we will no longer have access to the annex. And if an officer needs time to go to the bathroom, do police reports, grab something to eat, then we're doing it there at the Outlet Mall. And then we have to compare the twelve percent of the salary to what the city has, um, used in the past, which would be population. Um, it is not twelve percent population in the valley in North Bend. North Bend's population consists of thirty-five percent of the two cities put together. So it's, um, differential is, is within thirty-five percent. Uh, go ahead to the next one. So we have yet to start any negotiations with North Bend because we still have not settled our, um, contract with the Snoqualmie Police Officers Association. And we've learned that North Bend is in the process of contracting with a consultant. Um, they've, they've agreed to spend sixty thousand dollars, um, for a study to find out if it's feasible for them to start their own police department. They've they've agreed to spend sixty thousand dollars for a study to find out if it's feasible for them to start their own police department. It's expected that that is going to take about a year. So in the meantime, we have received verbal request that we extend the existing agreement for one year from North Bend. Now, if we extend for one year and things. Can't come to an agreement for a long term, five year contract. We're going to find ourselves with some uncertainty in the next biennium budget. Because if we extend for twenty twenty five, there's going to be budget and staffing revisions that will have to be done. You know, if we go back to what the contract pays for, it's eight police officers and two sergeants, et cetera. And they would continue the estimated imbalance of the compensation for another year of approximately one million dollars. The our finance people have estimated the actual cost. By putting the thirty five percent onto the contract to be actually three point five million dollars is what. What they believe that the the North Bend needs to be compensating for the police services. And that's a difference between if it rolls over exactly the same and we don't change any language, it it automatically goes to two point five million. So the best possible outcome. Especially in my view, is a extended five year contract. That's what I want. That's what the city wants. We have worked hard to develop a relationship with the citizens of North Bend. I think we are well liked over there. They they absolutely love the police department. The officers that are assigned to North Bend are embedded in the community. We go to. To city functions. We are always there for for special events. We go out of our way to be present and to be visible, even in the most obscure neighborhoods that usually don't see a police car drive through. I just received an email from somebody from North Bend last week that wanted to know the reason why he's seeing a patrol car. Every other day when they've seen none for a while. Not that he was complaining, but he thought something was up with his neighborhood. So we are making an effort to provide the best possible service that we can. And I believe that our police department is better for having North Bend as a partner. I believe as a citizen who lives in the valley that both cities are safer because of one police department. We don't, we don't really, our criminals don't see a boundary. They go back and forth. And the information sharing, the response times that we have, all being on the same frequency, I think. It goes a long ways to keeping the valley safe. So what you see on this slide, though, is if we were to counter with a five year contract extension. And put the thirty five percent instead of the twelve percent math to these numbers. And we would ask to include fifty percent of a detective and fifty percent of the admin sergeant. Our detective now is working about eighty five percent of the cases on his caseload are from North Bend. And currently they are not paying for a detective service. In the past, they've used the Major Crimes Task Force to be brought in. And sometimes not for what the task force is designed to do. It is not a just a general investigative force that can come out and and investigate crimes that aren't major, so major crimes. So in a perfect world, they would agree to fifty percent of the detective, fifty percent of the admin sergeant, because the admin sergeant is doing duties in both cities. And will be working towards helping both both cities reach the accreditation program in the next few years. The the city would also like to add, if we were to do a contract extension, a a true up clause where. By March first, our finance department would come up with a true number of what it costs for the previous year for law enforcement services. And then we would either, if we were underpaid, we would send a bill. Or if they overpaid, we would send a check. And it would be an ability to to actually have what is truly being paid to to police that city. Be reflected in the the money that is spent. Let me go to the next one there. Yeah. So we want to have this conversation with the entire council, get your feedback on a direction. Like I said, we have been contacted by North Bend wanting a one year extension to give them time to complete their feasibility study. I would be interested in in feedback and answering questions if I can, myself and. Finance Director Bute, who worked on this as well, could answer those questions.
Counsel Cotton and then Counsel Watten.
Two questions, if I may. Does North Bend realize that they've been underpaying? Whether their police services in the time that this has been contracted?
I don't think that I can accurately speak to that. I'm not sure.
And. My second question, which I think just went right out of my head. Was more relating to the actual contract where it says to terminate, it still would be eighteen months, not twelve months.
It would still be eighteen months. So if we. If we agreed in whatever it would look like to a one year extension. They could terminate anytime during that one year, and it would start an eighteen month clock. So, you know, if they get back that, yes, it's a go, they're going to start their own police department around this time next year. Giving the one year estimate on how long the feasibility study would last. Then in April of twenty twenty five, they could possibly terminate, and then we would start the eighteen month clock. Which would in turn get us a little bit short of the end of twenty twenty six for the new biennium budget. Or it could go one year, and then they terminate at the end of the year, which would get us through the next two year biennium budget. You know, I think. I think, I think both sides in my conversations with city council members over there with the mayor. You know, I think both sides have it in the best interest of the the citizens, the best interest of their budget, the safety of their cities in mind. And it's just figuring out what it's going to look like in the future. I have extremely high hopes that we can come to an agreement that would continue this relationship.
Counsel one.
Yeah, if I may make some some just kind of cursory remarks first of all. And then follow up with a question or two of the the police chief. First of all. When North Bend had their own police contract with King County, it was one officer, it was Mark Tonner. That covered for the city. When Snoqualmie came in, and Council Member Holloway can help attest to this. They went from one officer to four or five officers paying about the same amount of money. And the difference is today they have twenty four seven coverage. So if they were to to peel off their their part of our department. We would both be faced with the idea of not having twenty four seven coverage, and we saw how important that was a couple weeks ago. With the fire that was detected by one of our officers. The other follow up question or follow up point to that is, in order for them to move to their own police. They're going to have to put together a capital budget that's probably six to eight million dollars in in capital expenditures that. They have not planned for. So I just, you know, as a a word of caution to to our our other city. In in taking a look at it, and it's great that they're spending money on a survey to find that out. But I I guess the question to you then is. If we come to the point of where we have to dissolve our existing structure, how much disruption will that have for our citizens? In the service level?
Well, it would definitely require a scale back of our police budget by what North Bend has been paying. I would look at probably having to to either not hire and fill open positions. Possibly layoffs to reduce the the force. I do believe that the city of Snoqualmie will still have a twenty four hour police department. I can't. In twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, or twenty twenty six, whenever this happens, envision a world where. A city this size and with a population of this size does not have a twenty four hour police department. I believe that the council would make that work, that the police department would make that work. It's just not safe to not have that anymore. Well, that answers your question.
The second one is going back to your slide of thirty, three mil, three and a half million. And that was based off of a thirty five percent population, but this is where the math is a little fuzzy for me. It also captures fifty percent of the cost of two of the positions. So actually, we're still subsidizing. Maybe half a million or so. Of the services they're actually receiving.
I think, I think Drew could probably speak to that a little better than I can.
So let's step back a little bit and try to run through it. For the most part, we know what their staffing levels are, eight police officers, two sergeants, basically. What we did. Is actually increase the police chief's time from twelve to thirty five percent to reflect population. And keep in mind as well is that there's a lot of permits that are issued, right, right now within the city North Bend, so that. Percentage will likely actually increase over time. In addition, for the captain as well, from twelve to fifty percent. They also have one records tech position as well. And then in addition to that, we have built in fifty percent for the detective, fifty percent for the admin sergeant, and then there's also included as part of their contract fifty percent for the. Police support officer, in essence. We have inflated these numbers, right? So we've estimated how much their salaries and wages would cost overall. We've incorporated things such as repair and maintenance supplies, gun supplies, gun range supplies, stuff like that as a part of the overall estimate. And then what we also did is we incorporated actually overhead. So if you think about how much time and effort the city of Snoqualmie actually spends on this contract itself, it is pretty substantial. We've got, for example, ten percent of our F T Es are tied to the city North Bend, but we're not charging any of our payroll staff's time. For that, right? So they're not charged ten percent for our payroll staff's time. In addition, when you think about insurance, we are covering insurance here at the city. That includes your property coverage insurance, but then also your general. Insurance overall as well. We've seen those premiums increase pretty substantially over time as well. So. There's certainly a lot that we are covering that's included as a part of this three point five number. Once we do that kind of math overall, try to figure out what does it look like between twenty five and twenty six, just to start off with the biennium. Obviously, as a part of this conversation, the number that's in here is assumed where we might land when it comes to the S V A contract as well. So we've kind of got that. Baked into this number two. You start approaching three point five million dollars, which is what you see here, and then we're inflating that using our kind of normal. Inflationary proxies out there such as King County to kind of support twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine. I hope that kind of helps a little bit, but it's not fully based based on population. It's how many officers, what's their kind of level of service required? Taking their time and dividing that more appropriately, and then making sure that. We're using our cost allocation factors internally to figure out what percentage of our total overhead, maybe they should be contributing towards, right, overall?
Thanks. Thank you.
Counsel Benson.
So so clearly, North Bend's getting a screaming deal and has been for years. Which which really leaves me wondering what their motivation is for. For doing that. Do you have any kind of, I, because if, I mean, do they just want to go? Just full Mayberry, just, you know, chief and a couple deputies and or or and try and cut costs? Or is a, are they feeling like they're getting overcharged somehow? For what they're receiving? Or or do they, or do they want to go just way big? They want to, they want to make it, you know, Snoqualmie's not big enough for them. They want to. They want a huge department of their own. Is there any kind of indicator as to what's driving this? This?
Well, so I'll answer that because probably want to separate the police chief a little bit from.
Great, I'll look at you. You you look fantastic tonight.
Well, so in essence, no, I don't think they realize, right, overall, which is part of what the study is probably going to do for them is actually, okay, this is what it actually costs to run a police department. So I'm assuming that's kind of the result that they're actually going to see is, okay. What does it mean to actually stand up a police department? Your point is, well, taking Councilor Watten about six to eight million dollars for a capital expense. How do I build a police station, right? All that that goes into it overall. I think they're going to come around hopefully to where our perspective is and what we think is kind of missing overall. What they would have said and what's actually built into the agreement, and I just want to address Councilman Con for a second. So they have paid what's in the contract. Let's keep that in mind. We've agreed to this contract. They have paid that. So they haven't underpaid. They've actually paid. Exactly what they have paid because we both agreed to the same number itself. But there are certain sections in here that basically call out that they aren't going to pay any sort of office overhead to any kind of large extent overall. You know, I'm just trying to find it right here. It says Snoqualmie has certain costs associated with operating its police department, which will continue with or without this renewal agreement. So indeed, without North Bend, we would still have a payroll clerk, right, overall? Without this renewal.
So their argument, Mr. Butte, is so we shouldn't have to pay for that?
Exactly.
I mean. Are they four?
And such costs will not be considered direct or indirect costs. The foregoing fee assumptions are intended to capture direct costs of Snoqualmie associated with this renewal I L A. But not to subsidize Snoqualmie's direct or indirect costs associated with operating the Snoqualmie Police Department. So that's a pretty clear indication about what their mindset was when they're, when they were negotiating this is. You would still have an I T department. We shouldn't be paying for any percentage of that, even though their Andy's back there climbing into police cars and setting up the spill and system and things like that.
Let's back up here.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway.
That was the mindset of both Snoqualmie and North Bend. There were two signatories to that contract. So let's not disparage North Bend saying that. They forced us to absorb costs we shouldn't have. So that's. We agreed from some perceived benefits of having. Another officer over there, seven by twenty four, who we could support and he could support us as required. There was benefit back to the city and that there must have been an assumption that benefit offset. Those added costs. That's why it's in the contract and why both parties agreed to it. So let's let's caution how we characterize.
No, I agree with your statement, basically, is that there was certainly some benefit.
I need to calm him down.
If I may. Um, this is a new contract. And that language is in this new contract.
That's existing, correct?
This is the existing contract.
Oh, this is, so this is not something that's being proposed now.
That was ten years ago.
Okay, all right. But 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 it is being proposed now that it that it continues like this for another year so that they can decide how they run. A police department.
Well, in essence, is what they're proposing, and we want to offer them potentially a counter that might include. Any sort of the dollar amounts that you see here, and then we can kind of negotiate within that range overall. That is kind of what we're proposing.
Right, because a one year extension is not going to cover our costs. You you can tell it's going to be like one million dollar. Counsel Washington.
Yeah, so just give me a little bit of latitude here. This is the first time I'm seeing the contract. So I'm kind of looking at the incarceration rate, incarceration incarceration rates here and actual overtime rates. Is there a mechanism in the contract if we see some substantial overruns there? They're recouped.
So within the current contract or?
No, no, no. Well, maybe not in the current contract, but but moving forward, would there be a mechanism potentially in the new contract?
So I think we would want to chew up the costs basically as much as we possibly can. And yes, we would want that mechanism in there so that they're not overpaying and that. Or underpaying necessarily for the services that are provided.
My 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 thought is just around as as populations grow, right? And I think that's why you have the word predicted costs in here. Right, so, okay, thank you.
Counsel Johnson.
Yeah, I wonder what proportion of our calls.
Yeah, I wonder what proportion of our calls uh are split between the two cities. I took a a rough guess uh based on the department reports, and it seems north of thirty-five percent. Could be an argument that even thirty-five percent is generous.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, um I guess so. I'm still chewing good thought, um because one of my issues is I I'm the the split by split by population, I'm not sure. You know, should it be by population? Should it be by calls? Should it by something else? What metric do you use to do that split? Okay? And there may be differing opinions between us and North Bend as what is the appropriate measure to do that split. There was some basis of estimate ten years ago when we did the original contract that came at twelve percent. Uh I'm I don't remember. I'm not sure it's in the contract or if we've got memory of how that twelve percent was calculated. But um and I I do want to caution us from uh getting into conversations of opinions of motives of North Bend. Let's talk more appropriately of what are the actions of North Bend. Okay, so the action they do have is they have put money aside to hire consultants. I don't think they've done it yet. I think they have a name. I don't know. But they put money aside to go ask consultants, so they do have questions of whether or not they're getting a good deal or not. I don't I don't know their full opinion, but they do at least do have questions. But again, as eh they've stated, that analysis will probably take six months. Even if they kicked it off now, it would be the end of the year. There's probably six months of deliberation after that. And then if they were to make a choice after that, there would be the eighteen-month clause. So I guess my question is. While we get into discussions uh discussions of the how to appropriately allocate the cost between us and them, is there consideration of doing a two-year extension on the existing terms of the contract with that five percent escalator? So that gives them six months to do their considerations and eighteen months, if they want to call it at that stage, for us to do the disengagement under the under the existing contract with the existing written escalator in there. And we, in the meantime, we can also have conversations with them of what is the appropriate split between us and them on all these other costs? Because I'm I'm not sure we've had that conversation, and I'm not sure I eh eh I want to force that as part of eh eh maybe rush contract extension. Chief, you can correct me if I'm mis- if I'm mischaracterizing it, you know this. Okay, so is there consideration of doing, like you said, a two-year extension? Under the existing clauses of the contract with the escalator in place? So that we we can do these negotiations, they can do their analysis. Hopefully, we both can come to conclusion on this, and they can come conclusion or consult it to say, really not a bad deal. Because I still think it's really not a bad deal either way. But they may want time to do their analysis and see.
Councillor Benson?
Sure they want time. It costs them sixty thousand dollars to do their study for a year. It costs us a million for them to do their study for a year. So sure, that i- if they can make it a three-year study at sixty grand a year.
Why didn't go for five?
It it's gonna eh that three years will cost us about three million. And eh eh you know, it it's it's expensive for us to have them to this study. We we pay a lot more than they do. You know, eh to the mayor's point, they're 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 we're we're kind of taken into the teeth for about a million bucks a year on the current contract. So extending it.
We didn't think that ten years ago.
Right, right, we're talking about now.
I know.
We're talking about now. I don't eh you know, okay, so it didn't work out. Now we know that extending it for another year at a million bucks. Seems crazy. Well.
Councillor Washington?
Yeah, and Chief, correct me here. I mean, I'm, you know, just trying to understand this, but my understanding is there is some synergy in this cooperation. So, for example, two police officers are on duty in North Bend, two police officers are on duty in Snoqualmie. If there's a DV call in Snoqualmie, two officers have to roll to that call. Leaving one police officer from North Bend to come and essentially patrol the border, giving us an extra police officer.
Basically, it's like two separate districts, two beats. Um so if something major happens, we're moving towards that major and we have extra people. Uh we don't have to wait for King County to send anybody. We don't have to wait for Issaquah to drive the, you know.
If you're lucky, if you're lucky.
It's a major incident, they're probably gonna make it a little bit quicker.
They'll turn the lights on.
Eighteen minutes.
That's the benefit for the response to calls. You know, while it says that we have one officer over there, very seldom is there only one human being patrolling that city. We have our sergeant that moves back and forth. We, a lot of the times, backfill for overtime to have two people over there and two people over here. In a perfect world, when we are fully strength, we're gonna have um we're in our squads are going to be at a sergeant and five officers. To do to separate between the two towns. My feeling is it just makes sense. It makes us a better police department at the numbers we have right now. Because we can, the the training that we're doing, the the people that we have going to school to become trainers and different things. We are self-sufficient when it comes to training in most areas now. That would that would probably take a a huge hit if we were to to downgrade the size um for the city of Snoqualmie.
So economies of scale. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
So I'm the finance guy, so I get heated about this and I want the actual cost, but I think just to call back up Councilmember Holloway's point, you know, when we started, we had a entire police department that we were funding. Then in the first contract, what happened? You took the police chief, you took the police captain, for example, and North Bend started funding ten percent of that, right? So that was still certainly a cost savings, I think, overall to the city. You did achieve the economies of scale. Now we moved it a little bit further during this next contract, became ten to twelve percent, but then what did we also add to that? Two sergeants. They started funding two sergeants as a result of this next contract. So I think what we're kind of seeing is actually something that's been very graduated over time. Maybe that's where we need to go with this third is, okay. What can North Bend potentially take on, depending if they agree and if we agreed overall, right? What is that potential? What I do want to make sure to present as a part of the picture, and I think what we did here is, what is the actual, our estimate of an actual cost overall for this? In terms of the ability to provide those services, and maybe we can work up to that over time as potentially an option as well. When it comes to the the timeframe itself, I think we're relatively open. Generally, overall, but we do want to potentially offer a counterproposal. So um a year extension maybe be starting right itself at three point five and see maybe exactly where we land. That's a possibility. I think you mentioned just a two-year extension, but maybe we offer as a part of a two-year extension the numbers that we got here, right? And they can come back and they can counterpropose overall. What kind of services are they looking for? And we can kind of work towards an estimate that might work for both cities. So that's really what we're seeking, and I know I get a little heated when I see, right, these differences overall, um primarily because we're discharged with protecting, right, the financial health of the city overall. Uh but maybe there's some place somewhere in the middle that we can both be in, and I think the police chief has enjoyed working with the citizens of North Bend as well as the residents over there, and we are one value overall, so I think trying to reach that kind of conclusion through this process is critical, so.
Mayor Pro Tim Holloway?
So um uh actual cost difference versus allocated cost difference. Uh eh take case in point, the payroll clerk. We can't go out and hire thirty-five percent of a payroll clerk. We have a payroll clerk. We're not hiring additional, so that that cost doesn't change as a result of this contract coming in place. I think that's some of the premise under which that original contract was done, is there consideration of going to what's the cost differential versus versus what's the cost allocation in the counterproposal?
So we could certainly go in that direction. What I s- so struggle with conceptually, I think overall, right? Is, you know, what happens if we reduce the the payroll clerk's time by ten percent, and what value would we gain as a result of that as a city? Right, so there is some benefit that us that we might receive by reducing the overall kind of load. Now I'm losing my voice. Overall, when it comes to this, right? Maybe the city would actually benefit from by having their time back and devoted to other activities within the city overall. So there are ways for us to be able to find cost reductions over time. Maybe it's combining the payroll clerk with other duties, right, overall. And then find ways to kind of shift stuff around so that we don't have to hire additional staff in the future and eventually save money that way. So anyway, that's that's where my mindset and conceptualization has been overall when it comes to this, so. And that's how I've approached this situation for the most part, I think, overall, with the allocation factor that we've deployed. Now, I certainly see that point, right, overall, and I think it's it's a valuable consideration. We can do that work to estimate what that might look like if you know, in accounting, it's called relevant costs, right? So is the payroll clerk an actual relevant cost to this exercise, especially if we're gonna retain them after the fact as well? Probably not. Um but if you think about all the additional things that they could potentially do, and that in my estimation, it does become a relevant cost, it just it's hard to put an estimate on that of what we would gain as a result of recovering ten percent of the time to devote elsewhere.
But I in peace, but also there's no deduction in the cost for the benefits we're getting from having North Bend police over there to help us out when we need. So I think there's some give here that just.
And we do often focus on the cost, right, side of the equation, not necessarily the benefits. So, yeah, that is certainly.
Particularly when it's it's a nebulous benefit. It's there. We admit it's there. Couldn't I, we'd hard press put a dollar on it, I think.
Councillor Benson?
I've got a boarder in my house. She's a lovely lady. We love her. But if she said to me, look, we're gonna, I'm gonna pay for the water that I use and the electricity. But you gotta pay the mortgage on that room anyway. And whether I'm here or not, so I'm not gonna pay for that. It's not fair. That's just, that's insulting. For for the eh.
Not necessarily comparable either, though.
I I think it is. I think it is because we've got, for example, the clerk that's taking care of payroll for for everybody. And they're saying, well, you gotta you gotta employ her anyway. That that's not, that's.
No, my point is, ten years ago, we had a clerk. And ten years ago said, we're not gonna have to hire, we have enough capacity, we're not gonna have to hire another clerk or ten percent of a clerk or twelve percent of a clerk. We have the resources to support it. I don't have to incur any additional costs to support North Bend police coming on. And we, that was why you see the contract the way you do as as it currently stands.
And I think it's also why we're in this position, because eh now we're in this position because there eh they they don't have a realistic understanding of what it means to run a police department.
And I just want to give time for.
Can I interrupt? Councillor Christensen?
Yeah, um thanks. So I I think that this has been a a good conversation so far. I think that maybe there should be some additional conversations between the administration and the city of Snoqualmie and the city of North Bend that reinforce that we are trying to continue this relationship in a positive fashion and make sure that they have an understanding of what it is costing us to to run this as they go in and start looking at their studies so that they can at least have an eye to make sure that whatever study they end up ultimately utilizing, whichever the the person is that they use, is adequately looking at all the costs that go into it. And it's important to focus on the fact that both cities are benefiting from the contract, that our police department needs some stability, especially as they move forward with accreditation, and so that our officers feel comfortable with the direction that things are going. But I I think that there's been a lot of good discussion and that I think that we need to let the administrations handle it and get some more information, have some good positive conversations before we can really talk about where to go from here. Right, because I don't think we necessarily know what it is that they're also looking for or that they feel like is lacking, but I do think that communication should be pushed.
Councillor Johnson?
Let me just go forward one slide. I think it's the next one. Yeah, maybe it's another one. Uh yeah, there we go. So I guess the question that I would want uh North Bend's um administration and city council, as they make their decision, to be fully aware of is that um is what exactly the cost would be to them, depending on what comes back from their study. Uh it could be, maybe it costs, I'll make up some numbers here, let's say it costs ten million dollars over the next five years to start up their own police department. Okay, well, then they add this up and they go, oh, well, that's more than that, so we'll go our own way. My point is, I would like them to be fully informed as to what uh we think what kind of contract we would be interested in um in supporting. Uh if it's going to be us being in a deficit for a million dollars year after year, uh ad infinitum, uh then uh that's probably uh that that could be a tougher sell. But um yeah, just um yeah, I think to do be important for them to be fully informed about the decision that they are making. If we just extended the contract for one year and we never said, hey, just so you know, we're looking to true up the costs and stuff in the future, then they might make an uninformed decision thinking that uh staying with us would be significantly cheaper than going with uh the alternative uh that they come up with in the study. So I think that where I'm going with that is uh that I think that uh that from my my perspective, the administration, uh our administration should uh definitely be in talks with North Bend, uh as Councilman Per Christiansen said. But I also would like them to start to say, hey, just so you know, here's the numbers. Um it's not what it was. I don't know if this is literally what they should say. This is what the new thing is, um but something should be in that direction. Say again?
We should be an option in that study.
Right.
So that they have the comparisons. Yes, a realistic cost, but option in that study.
Right. So so I think we have our marching orders. We're gonna go continue to have the conversation. And um we will bring it back. So, thank you. So we we will need to extend past ten PM. We do have an executive session. We do have a couple mayor's report and stuff, but we're willing to forego that if we want to move into executive session.
Yeah.
So they're moved to extend to maybe like after ten? Yes?
So are we foregoing?
Ten thirty?
But we haven't done the.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we have to extend, so we need to move to extend past ten PM.
Move to sit past ten PM for five minutes.
Second.
No, move the extent past ten PM.
And it was saying, okay.
Second.
So moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, same by Councillor Washington. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post name? Right, we are extending past ten PM. So we're gonna so you're fine, we will forego the next several items and hop to the executive session. And the we have two executive sessions pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one AI to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters leading to ag- agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which agency is the governing body or member acting in an official capacity. Is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence of the agency lasting approximately. So we have two. So how long do you think the first one, which would be our public works, probably ten minutes at the most? Councillor Washington?
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, do we have two or three? So is that inclusive of the reclaimed water reservoir project update?
We will have two.
Inclusive of, okay.
That is exclusive of that.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe ten for that, and then how long do you think the other?
So I would probably go for the second one.
Twenty?
Thirty minutes.
Okay, so we'll start off, okay. So so it'll be total thirty minutes. And the so the first one will include our um Kim Pratt, our city attorney from Androna, Andrew Vining, Jeff Hamlin, Drew Butte, and then um we also have for the additional for the exa- other executive um session is attorneys, Sophia, maybe. Um again, Drew Butte, Human Resources Manager, Kim Johnson. And then Police Chief Brian Lynch. Is there anyone I didn't include? Okay, so no actions anticipated following conclusion in executive session, so the council will adjourn. Okay, so no actions anticipated following conclusion in executive session, so the council will adjourn directly from the closed session or executive session. And not return to open session, the city clerk will be informed of the concluding time. For the session, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So with that, we will go right into an executive session. And we should come back out in thirty minutes, so probably about ten, twenty, right? So we do have a link for the executive session, so we will need to, um, get into the, that link. We'll come out of this meeting and go into the other.
Yeah.
So Sophia, we'll see you in the executive session.
Keep checking me.
Start seeing triple.
And Jeff Hamlin.
Considering I'm ready to have the Urkel glasses.
I emailed Jeff.
I did?
I just played, I just ordered five while we were sitting here, coming from Amazon.
We are, yes, please in the meeting, thank you.